Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
With approval of the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are called to order and we have a study session today. And just, I'm here, the mayor is out of town today, so I'm presiding, though Phil will be doing most of the talking and leading through this for us, presenting it to us. And for the viewers at home, and those that are here also, Dan Lampy did win the special election this Tuesday, and those results were certified yesterday by the board, and we had him sworn in yesterday afternoon.
Oh, Wednesday.
Wednesday?
Yep.
Wednesday, okay, exactly. And sworn in, but Dan had prior commitments that he's going to be out of town, so he is on council, just not with us at this point. We'll welcome Dan when he's able to be back with us. So, I will turn it over to Phil.
Okay, thanks, Tim. Good morning, everybody. Thanks for sharing your Saturday with us. Happy to have you here on the daylight hours. Today, we start the first of what's really a multi-step process of this year's budget. This morning, we'll be going through general fund and the general operating departments, and we'll be talking about some changes to the tax base, we'll be talking about operational budget changes. And then Monday night at 5:30 before our council meeting, we'll be meeting with Jenny Blankenship from PFM. And we're going to be looking at tax increment financing and general obligation debt and projects then, and look at kind of our future planning and debt levy rates and projects there. Next Saturday, the 24th, we'll meet again the same time period, and we'll go through water, sewer, solid waste, our enterprise funds. And we'll also go through our general capital improvement, which is our smaller kind of cash fund that we do things like small park improvements, crosswalk signs, some contributions to other agencies. After that, we'll set the public hearing on February 2nd, and we'll hold the public hearing for this budget on February 16th. Each budget, we have to have a public hearing, and then the council can certify essentially the budget and the tax level. And then we get everything into the state, our deadline for everything to the county and the state is March 16th this year, since March 15th is a Sunday. So what that does is it just gives us a timeline where we can kind of break this down into smaller chunks, walk through it, discuss it, make adjustments to it as we go along, and we're not so pinched for time at the very last minute. Moving on, first, I'd really just like to say thank you to Jack, thank you to all the directors, thanks to Carly and Val for helping put this budget together. They're the ones that really look hard at their operations and their needs and see where things can be adjusted down, where things need to be added for meeting the needs of the community or the council. And Jack's the one that puts a lot of work into making sure that everything fits at the end of the day, and that the money we have coming in meets the needs for the money going out. And that's what we've really spent a lot of time on in this last week, is trying to get a grip on where all of our valuations are, where rollbacks impacts are, backfills and the like. Again, as you guys know, the biggest area of the budget, really, people and projects. We have a list of things and we can go through them, but the ongoing commitments and priorities of the council to do either projects or to improve upon things is either project financing or paying for the people who go out and have the discussions and manage the projects and get the things done. So that's what you'll see today. There are areas for services and commodities and those types of things, but they're really a small, small part of what we do. The number of employees that we've had here in Waverly has been fairly steady since the early 2000s. I think public services, it's been steady since the 70s. And that time, you know how much the city has grown since then. So we continue to find ways to look for efficiencies, look for automation, look for a better way to do things. And we're also cognizant that sometime in the future, we'll probably have to adjust our staffing levels to meet growing needs. Really, today, we want to talk about this budget, but we're also going to spend some time talking about the next five years, because we know that this budget is, like I've said a number of times, there's just very minimal changes to this budget. And the reason we're doing that is because we really want to see where the state backfill goes in the future, where the property tax values grow through growth, and where the residential rollback goes because of change in ag volatility and ag land. As you guys know, about 70% of our taxable value comes from residential. So a 1% or 2% swing in that rollback means real dollars. So this year, you know, it's going to be kind of, maybe not as exciting of this one-year budget, but we're really looking to set aside some money and do our long-range planning. I'd like to walk through the first kind of cover memo here that's in your books, for those of you who have a book. And I won't read it to you, but I just want to hit some highlights. The valuation has gone up about 1.2% overall. And this would have gone up more, but we did have that second year of the commercial industrial rollback of 5%, so that offset some growth. And then last year, we did not certify very much TIF, because we were in a year kind of between debt and projects. This year, we start, for '15, '16, we start paying on the bonds for the Cedar River Parkway and some of those other TIF projects. And so we needed to do, move some money from general taxation over to urban renewal tax increment financing. And the way that works is we basically look at the debt that we have. That gives us a number for how much money we need in the upcoming year to pay out for that debt. And then the county actually backs in to how much value, property value, they need to put in the urban renewal area to get that money to pay for the debt. And so that's why each year it moves a little bit, because it's based on what's needed for projects or for debt, and then how much valuation is needed to pay for it. So when we set that, then it kind of moves around the general fund, that 8-10 levy that pays for salaries and operations and insurance. And that's where we spend a lot of our time finding how to make that all work with different revenue sources. We did adjust the proposed debt service levy up a little bit, about, I think about seven or eight cents. And that's to pay for revised cost estimates to the dry run. To make that all fit in with the same tax levy as last year at $14.15, we backed some of the other stuff down. So we're really pleased to have a general fund budget that's flat and a tax levy that's flat, because we've been able to find alternate sources of revenue and make it work this year. As we go through this, because even though the tax levy's flat, I want to be clear, because I know we had some questions last year when property tax bills came out, even though the levy rate that we asked for of that $14.15 is flat, people will see a change in their property tax bills. So if everybody held their tax value, or tax asking, flat this year, the county, the school, and us, and the home value stayed the same, because the rollback on residential went up about 2.5%, that means that a home valued at $200,000 would see an increase in their property tax bill of about $38 a year. So that rollback, there's a lot of levers moving. So even if we hold our part steady, because of the rollback change, people will still see a change in their tax bills. Commercial, on the other hand, if, because of their 5% rollback, that's about actually a 5.3% change in the valuation. And so, commercial property valued at $550,000 would see a decrease in their tax bill by about $390 a year. So that's that commercial property tax relief that the state and a lot of us have been talking about. They are seeing it in their tax bills this year. That also includes multifamily. So multifamily property is still at that 90%. Next year, they'll go down to 87%, and over the next several years, they'll actually go from being taxed at 100% two years ago down to the residential rate of about 50%. So they'll see savings there in multifamily. We, being the city and the county, are not sure what that impact will be yet, because we've never had a multifamily classification in the past. And so we're kind of learning as we go how big of a pot is that and what's going to change. There was a question early in our planning on December 10th about what would it take to offset the increase in property taxes to homeowners? And that would take basically cutting about $154,000 in cash out of the city budget and the resulting levy rate drop. That $154,000 in cash, that's basically two times the amount that Nestle pays in in property tax. So you can see how that seems like a small impact to a whole bunch of residential property. It's a big impact to one or two commercial properties, and it's a pretty good chunk of the operating cash that we have. I'll show some handy graphs here. I know you're going to be disappointed that I don't have a PowerPoint. I know people love, love their PowerPoints. I still find that paper and overheads just work a little bit better, and they never ask to be restarted in the middle of your presentation. You can see here, I like to show this graph, because it basically shows where our 100% this doesn't show 100%, this says taxable. But anyway, it shows the same in trends in valuation over time, how they continue to grow, and trends in the tax rate over time. And in general, the main point of this chart is to show that as your values grow and your budgets are fairly stable, you can lower the tax levy. Now, you see in here some years where the tax levy goes up and down, and that's really a result of debt service. How many projects does the city want to do? What's able to be done with capacity and the like? So there are a lot of variables, but it's just a quick illustration to show as values go up, we can hold our levy steady or drop it slightly. This chart here shows just trends in 100% valuation, basically before any rollbacks are applied, or homestead, or military credits. And it stacks both the part of tax that comes out of our urban renewal area for TIF and the blue bar, which is everything else that goes towards general operations and city debt. And so you can see here between these two, this is what I was talking about a little bit earlier, where we're asking for more urban renewal dollars in this upcoming budget to pay for our major projects, which actually gave us a slight drop in what's available for our general operations. We've talked about kind of where the rollback is going and the fact that we lose basically 5% again this year, commercial and industrial. But we are getting backfill. We are projecting to get that dollar amount backfilled from the state this coming year. And it's supposed to be backfilled at a true dollar-for-dollar loss through fiscal year '16, '17. And then after that, it's capped, and they're supposed to keep paying that at that cap level into the future. Most state backfills or contributions to local governments go the way of the dodo, and sooner or later, it's taken away. And so what we're talking about this year in this budget is to use of that $220,000 backfill, we need about $20,000 of that to balance the budget, so that we're not increasing the tax rate or making significant cuts in other areas. But the $200,000, we're proposing to put that into an extra fund to save. And yesterday, our grapevine, which is kind of the city manager's listserv, was really active with people asking, are you budgeting your backfill dollars? And everybody that I saw said, yes, we have to budget all of it, because without cutting a ton of staff, and some of these are smaller towns and some are bigger, but without making major changes, that's a lot of money out of our budget that we can't afford to lose. I think by the fact of the directors coming in and saying, we'll give you a fairly flat budget, we're not going to ask for anything that we don't need, and we also have contingency planning in the expenditure side, we're able to stick that money aside for a rainy day, and we'll talk about that a little bit more. And everything that we do, while we look at daily operations, we really have to look at a focus on encouraging growth and encouraging the right kind of growth. We've been spending quite a bit of time lately trying to encourage investment and growth in the downtown area. There are some discussions now in the community with private individuals whom are interested in possibly doing next phase of a business park or redeveloping some areas to do business-type condos. We've even had some discussions with people from Waterloo Cedar Falls about housing developers and builders coming to town feeling like Waverly is kind of an untapped market, which we say, well, it may be, but let's talk about that. What does that look like? As we move forward, we need to figure out ways to encourage that in a smart way that doesn't create giant booms and busts, but just creates this kind of stable growth. I think Mike's figure for housing developments is somewhere in the neighborhood of, to create 10% per decade, you need about 30 to 40 housing starts a year. Our market hasn't been doing that, it's kind of slowed down a little bit, but we'll see what the future brings. Anyway, as we look at a business like anything else, you need to either figure out how to cut expenses to grow your margin, which works short-term, or you need to figure out how to get more customers to grow your margin, which works long-term. And we'd like to figure out how to get more customers. Let's talk a little bit about sources of revenue. I've talked a lot about property tax, but we have a lot of different things that come into this budget to make it work. Property tax is the major workhorse for us. It's almost 70% of our revenues in the general fund. In water and sewer, they're, water and sewer, those are the bills, they're direct. But property tax is a major workhorse for us, like I said, and that's why we watch it so closely. That's why we watch the valuations in town, that's why we watch rollbacks, that's why we watch backfills. Another revenue source for us is sales tax, and that's up to 1%, a 1% tax on sales and services in Waverly boundaries. And that, right now, has been approved by voters in 2002, will go through 2019. And of the million dollars it generates, about $380,000 goes for bonds associated with the fire station construction project and the aerial fire truck. The rest of that goes towards public safety equipment and road and drainage maintenance and improvements. And you'll see us talk about that today, when we talk about the ambulance, when we talk about road projects in the future, a little bit about police cars, I think they're coming out of lost, police utility vehicles is what we'll be talking about today. And so that's an important funding source, and an important funding source to think about as far as requesting the voters to renew it or approve it again in the near future, and understanding where are we going to, where do we need those dollars? We, as a city, can ask for them to go certain areas, we need to actually do that. And so will they go towards road maintenance, will they go towards stormwater, will they continue to go towards public safety? What's the best avenue? And that's, 2019 is going to be here pretty soon. Road use tax is another thing that we use that primarily funds our street operations. Road use tax is our share per capita of the gas tax that we've all been hearing so much about lately. Road use tax is going up by about a half to 1% a year of our share, and expenses normally are going up by 2% to 3%. And so there are some things that we can do, like looking to create efficiencies with equipment, looking to adjust levels of service, which we've talked a little about with snow removal or road patching. None of those are really great options, but in order for that fund to be sustainable, we either need to find alternate sources of revenue, or we need to, again, figure out what level of service can we provide long-term. Utility fees, again, those are pretty obvious. If you use it, you pay for it. We take the money in and we keep the operations going. Pretty simple stuff there. We try to budget our rates around what we need here for long-term capital and for daily operations. And we also find that we're about in line with the state average, and the state average is actually outpacing increases compared to our forecast. Hotel motel tax revenue, again, that's a revenue approved by the voters. That does not have a renewal, but it's about $160,000 per year. By state code, 50% goes to a fund for tourist and recreation opportunities in the arts. The other can be used towards just general operations, and you'll see that used in our budget. And finally, tax increment financing. We have, this is kind of a complicated thing, so I'm trying to think about how to explain it best, but what we have is we have designated areas, geographic areas in town. And in general, it's the Northwest Industrial Park out by RADA and Waverly Plastics. It comes down, it uses, has to connect by right-of-way, so it uses railroad and street right-of-ways. It includes the downtown area, and then it goes out Fourth Street and includes a lot of the area in Fourth Street, in the South Industrial Park, Walmart, the areas, I even think a little bit south of Hy-Vee, some of that area. The way it works is you basically, in most of those areas except the Northwest, from the first year you certify, you get 25 years to capture incremental property tax. And so what it does is it basically sets this base property tax when you put everything into the district to say the property tax on that day in year 2000, we'll say, is the base. And that continues to go to everybody who collects property tax, so the schools, the county, the city, and Hawkeye Community College. Any growth in that is considered increment. So over time, this part here is the increment, which is allowed to be captured as TIF money or towards urban renewal money. And that increment then can be used to borrow against for public infrastructure projects, land acquisition, things that really go towards economic development, or it could be used for rebates. We can say, well, you generated an increment, we're going to rebate you a portion of that increment, like we've done with a number of companies in town. The thing that we have to remember is in 2025, those areas, or whatever the date is, those areas time out, and you're done. And so you need to get everything paid off by then, and make sure that the increment can pay for whatever you've agreed for. But then the good news is, and we'll see this here in, I think about 2019? Yeah, about three more years. All of this new goes back to everybody. So that goes back to us, that goes back to the schools, that goes back to county. And that's the textbook way this should work, is that you use it to build over time. It pays for its own way in growth, and you try to get the most growth in that area that you can manage in that time, and then everybody benefits in the end. Because when you get, like for us, $25 million in valuation that come back to the general fund in one year, that's huge. And so part of this budget is saying, let's just kind of keep it stable and keep going until we get to that date. And then when that valuation comes back, then we can talk about maybe some of the needs that we've been delaying over the past, or just what that means for the whole community as far as tax rates and everything else. So, quick illustration, but it's a big revenue source for us, because the city captures that whole increment, and that's a lot of, and we get to apply basically everybody else's tax rate to that. So that's a lot of money that can go towards projects and things like that, that we, though we get this back, we then don't get the full amount for debt. So it's a trade-off. We get it for operations, but we don't get to borrow against it for things like roads and bridges. The other thing I want to show is, we've talked about this a little bit, but here is kind of a breakdown. I show this every year, just so people understand. Here's a breakdown of property tax by entity in Waverly. So you might be paying $3,000 a year, but know that about 40% goes to us, a little more than 40% to the schools, 15 to Bremer and County, and Hawkeye gets a share, a small share. And I think they actually have an election next Tuesday on bond issue?
February 5th, I believe.
February, okay, yep, first week in February. So that's just a quick breakdown. I know I show it every year, but I think for the folks at home too, it's just kind of a reminder of where does the money go when you write that property tax check every two years, or every six months, excuse me. Every two years would be nice. Statewide comparisons, again, I like to show this every year, and we do this a number of different ways in your book. But statewide, we try to pick a number of cities, and I know this is hard to read. See if I can zoom in as much as possible here. You have it in front of you. But what I try to do is just say, okay, for some of the cities around us, some of the other college communities, some of the bigger cities, some of the smaller cities, I try to capture most of Bremer and Butler County, so we compare those two, since they're a lot of our neighboring communities and share housing and school districts. What I tried to show here is just a change in taxable value from 12 to 13, and these are the most recent numbers available from the state for full tax years, and then the change in tax rate. So you can see, really, to get an idea of where do we stand, how do we compare, each city is unique in where its valuation is trending and why, and they're also unique in what they need their tax rate to go towards and how that changes and why. But I just want to, sometimes I like to show kind of an at-a-glance. We try to be, try to continue to be an attractive city, providing great services with middle-of-the-pack costs. The other thing I like to show is of your, some rough calculations, everything doesn't, for illustration purposes, what does it cost? What does it cost to run a service area? And what does it cost me per month, what does it cost me per year on a typical, again, this is just a $200,000 home. So of about $1,500 bucks a year that goes towards our city operations, that breaks down to about $126 bucks a month. Things like accounting and billing, together, we're about $5 bucks a month. Public safety, I think, together, is about $46 bucks a month. And we were trying to come up with an illustration, and so Jack helped me out here. That's basically Jack's date night of two large pizzas, a 12-pack of his favorite beverage, and a movie. So, well, he's an economical guy, he saves one. He gets a discount if you get two and just put the other one in the fridge, so. Sorry, Jack. The other one that I like to use as an example is the public library is about $19 bucks a month. And that's, if you go to Walmart, that's a new release on DVD or one new hardback. You can get as many as your Little Heart's content at the library for free. You have to give them back, but you can get as many per month as you want. So I like to kind of break it down for folks, just to say, well, what does that cost me? What does it cost to run community development zoning? What does it cost to run aquatics or the cemetery? And this is just kind of a way to have that conversation piece. I talked a little bit about taking some of that backfill money and creating a new contingency fund. And when I was in Colorado, we were doing this, because out there, their revenues are primarily sales tax. And sales tax, as we all know, especially out there, is extremely volatile. Follows a lot of the oil cycle booms and busts. And so in one year, it can be up 6%, the next year, it can be down 12%. And so one of the things they did was they created a general fund stabilization reserve. It's not to replace our general fund reserve, which is that 30% target that we talk about. It's really to say, that's like, you know, we're going to put that in a CD or somewhere safe, but we might need a savings account where in some years, we want to take a little out, and some years, we want to add a little to it, and it's not as maybe a big of a deal to use this reserve as it would be to use that 30% general fund reserve, which is more for major issues. We think that a decent target, and this is all, again, all up to the council, but we think that a decent target for that reserve would be 5% to 10% of our annual property tax receipts, which are about $5 million bucks. So that would be $250,000 to $500,000 for a kind of a floating target for that account. This year, by taking that $220,000 of backfill money, which we'll get throughout the fiscal year, and then also taking about $40,000, $45,000, was it quite that much? For the general fund reserve? Well, we have a page in the back, so we'll get to the numbers. About 60. So we have, remember, our auditor was saying that we're at about 33% reserves. So we propose taking that 3% above that 30%, moving that into this fund too, which would get us to a little, right around 5% of that target. This is really an account that would be used for a major employer leaves town or drops valuation, unanticipated rollback changes in revenue. It would give us time to take a look at kind of how to restructure things or how to do things without having to do knee-jerk reactions or make hasty decisions. It would also help us, I think, when we have some discussions with bond agencies and others about the level of savings and contingency planning that we've done. I put an example in here, not to name names, but in the event a major employer leaves or a property loses significant value, such as maybe a major employer for IT and insurance professionals in the community, what we see when those leave, like in downtown, is a building can lose 40 to 60% of its value. Because it's sitting empty, it's not generating income. So there's a property in town that's valued about $10 million, and let's say it dropped to $6 million in value. Though, impact to us directly in revenues from that one incident is about $50,000 a year. And so this is a fund that can offset that for a short period of time while we redirect and figure some things out. Again, I think it's not to replace anything, it's just to add an extra layer of planning and an extra layer of redundancy to our systems here, which I think we can use, given changes in ag, changes in commercial climates, and changes in the state climate. We've talked a lot about goals and objectives in the past. This next 12 to 18-month kind of cycle here, we're finishing up a lot of those major projects. We're working on a lot of those major capital items. And the other items, like economic development, strategic planning, and housing planning, and getting things in that, that's what we do kind of daily with our staff and with community members. My thought is, we take this next year and we finish, we do these major projects like the dry run and Cedar River Parkway wrap up, and then we need to kind of take a look at what the future holds and what really is going to be the need for the community and the ability to fund these projects in the future. We have a lot of buried infrastructure that's going to need attention. We have road infrastructure that's going to need attention. We have a big bridge that we need to build yet, and we have an old green bridge that we need to figure out what to do with. And so there are a lot of major things we can look at over the future. We'll get to these later in the budget, but I just want to highlight some of the citizen requests we've received. The senior center has requested an additional 25... The Senior Center has requested an additional $2,500 a year to go from 7,500 to 10,000. Heritage Days has requested an additional $3,000 a year to go from two to five. Helping Services of Northeast Iowa has requested a grant of $2,000. Breamer County Community Partners has requested $100 from the city. Northeast Iowa Community Action Corporation has requested $7,405.50, which is 75 cents a person. The Waverly Area Veterans Post has requested an additional gift of $50,000 to help with their computer facility area and programming area for families and veterans. And then the Chamber has, again, requested $45,000 this next year. In the past, and we didn't receive a direct request this year, but in the past, we've received for a small picnic shelter in Rolling Meadows Park and a Trail to Heinz Edition. We haven't built the shelter because we typically build shelters in bigger areas, but I know we've seen some new shelter designs, like a one picnic bench shelter that Rotary has helped fund in Pelican Park. That may be an option there. A trail to Heinz is very difficult until that road gets rebuilt. Because right now, it's basically a county highway and there are not a lot of shoulders and there's not a lot of space for a trail. So that's more of an opportunity project when it's time to redo that roadway. Again, we've talked about some of the changes and we'll go through those more in the general fund budget with the directors. Next week, we'll cover water sewer and solid waste funds and those financing documents and that. Just real quickly, the adjustments to salaries this year. We have a negotiated 2.8% raise for the police unit. Last year it was three. We have a negotiated 3% for the city unit, city bargaining unit. And then that goes down to 2.8 next year. And a 3% adjustment for the non-union, non-contract employees this year to match the city unit. With that, I will talk about two other things real quickly here and then we'll get into some of the other items. We've talked about this in the past. I just want to show kind of general trends here. The blue line is health insurance and we anticipate that to go up a little over 5% this next year. We just got numbers in yesterday. And you can see that that line has flattened out because of joining the pool. And the other thing is workers' compensation is dropping. We've had very few claims this past year. We're on a new insurer. We've done a lot of different things we talked about last year with a new safety program, training, directed care of medical needs and the like, and that's really helping us out. The other thing that we often talk about is 411. And you can see that the 411 rate has dropped off as far as the contribution rate for the city. The actual dollar cost will be about stable because though this drops off with salary adjustments, it is basically flat for a true cost. This is good to see. We also, we've been encouraging them as members to use some of these savings to update the mortality tables. If you guys understand kind of insurance and retirement, which you all do, they're still working off old mortality tables from, I believe, the 80s and 90s, which has life expectancy still in the mid 70s. And that's starting to get expensive because the models haven't always been updated to show life expectancies coming realistically into the 80s and low 90s for some people. So just want to show that because we've talked about it in the past. Any questions with that overview or are you guys ready to dig right in? Let's do it.
One quick question. Your graph on evaluations, it kind of shows the spread. Are we seeing that spread going in a positive direction because of new growth or just appreciation in the, in the property values themselves?
I would say both. In the, let me, I know these are all hard, a lot of numbers, I apologize, but this is just kind of, I would say in residential, just from kind of windshield surveys, the residential has been growth and appreciation. Mainly growth in this last year because you'll remember that in, that even tax years, valuations don't really change. And they're getting ready to go into major overhaul and valuations now for the 2015 tax year. So most of these numbers that we see here are either, is really growth. So when you get into commercial and industrial, those numbers, you know, we didn't really lose buildings in industrial, but we might have lost an income-producing tenant that would then adjust the value of that property. So they use three different types of value, but I think that next year, we've seen some, we see current commercial growth. That won't come on the tax rolls till next year. And so I think that's why we had kind of a few quiet years, which is why commercial, industrial, 100% didn't really move. And we've seen infill in residential and that's why we see that 2.5% adjustment there.
And another question, kind of tied to setting aside some funds for reserve. With the dry run project, do we anticipate home values increasing just because we have moved them out of the floodplain? Or do we anticipate those values staying pretty steady?
We anticipate those values rising because we know that it'll have a direct market impact on the saleability of the homes and the price of the homes. And then that, it might take a year or two, but then that gets reflected in the value, valuations, the tax valuation. So it's not, we don't believe it to be immediate, but we do believe the dry run to be an actual kind of redevelopment project because we know that people will be sticking money into those houses if they're out of the 100-year floodplain. And we know that they'll probably sell faster and for more money. So have we banked it into our projections? No. We're still anticipating residential growth to come from new construction. Or some infill, limited infill.
I've talked, since I live in that, I've had a few realtors kind of give me an idea of what my house would be worth. They always say, well, you could sell it for this. They said if you're out of the floodplain, add 20%. So. And if you look around, houses in my area sold for sale for months and months and years even, so.
Right.
There's, when you, when you, when I'm trying to sell my house, they have to compete against other houses in the floodplain, which are all obviously sell lower and take longer. It should just improve everything. But then taxes, your valuation doesn't go up right away, so it takes a little while to catch up. It shouldn't make a difference, I would think.
Yeah, we think long range, you know, in a five to 10-year period, that area is, is perfect for infill and urban, what we would call urban revitalization, which is more for housing. Because there, those are the homes that have some more architectural character because of the period they were built. But unfortunately, they're the homes that people stay away from because of the anticipated risk of a flood.
Yep.
And the extra cost.
Flood insurance is not cheap at all.
Right, right. And by the way, Bill, have you heard anything lately about the flood insurance program? If that's just been put on hold? Okay. Yeah, I remember we were talking a while back about the federal program and basically jumping by 500%.
Yeah.
And the give and take is, well, that's, that's a huge jump for people paying already, you know, $1,000 a year. But the flood insurance program isn't sustainable, it can't pay for itself. And so it's, it'll be interesting to see. Hopefully, we can just beat them to the punch and get this project done and the maps redrawn before they make a decision, which with the federal government is a distinct possibility.
But timing may be where that value growth in the community would offset any backfill, shortfalls, those type of, or help?
Help, that's right. That's right. I, you know, when Jack and I are looking at, talking about backfills and, and all of that, when Jack and I look at that, we really anticipate budgeting without those dollars and just planning on it not being there. So that any we do is kind of nice or gravy or whatever. And it's a fine balance too, because you don't want to overdo it on everybody else. Because what, if you do, basically you're transitioning that tax burden from commercial to residential, saying, we still need the same amount of dollars if we're not going to get it from X, then we need to get it from Y. But I think that's why this year, we want to use some of it and then bank the majority of it.
One other question, Phil, as we go forward and just kind of.
Yeah.
People listening in. What is, as we're looking at the equivalent for the tax levy rate of our, of our military? What, one penny or one nickel on that was equivalent to, out how much in the budget?
Yeah. So I think this year, we're at a nickel is $22,000. So a penny's 4,500, 4,400, somewhere in there. But yeah, we say a nickel is 22,000 in expense. All right. We've talked a lot about valuation. Again, we've come from about 1460 in 2011 down to 1415 last year in this proposed coming fiscal year. So that's good to hold that steady. Just quickly overview, I like to show kind of the property, or the graph breakdown, pie charts, the finance mind-blowing graphs that we have. Again, this is general fund revenues. Like I talked about, just see it quickly. Property tax is about 70%. Interest is really about zero and miscellaneous is .1. Fines and forfeitures about 1%. Service revenues, these are just fees for service, whether it's through a library, other things like that, 20%. Intergovernmental revenues or transfers from other agencies, 5.2. And then hotel motel tax is almost 3%. Expenditures, you can see that we have a lot of little slices of the pie and you'll experience that as we go through it today. Liability insurance, accounting, billing, admin over here is about 15%. Streets is about 5%. And streets general is really, and Michael talked about this, kind of our streetlights and airport and things like that. It's not so much the actual salaries and trucks, that's road use tax. Library is about 15%. When you look at golf course, pro shop, cemetery, leisure services, that's about 15%. Economics, city hall, civic center is about 5% in there. And then ambulance is just a hair, fire is about 2.5%. So again, just a, we have a couple of big areas. And the reason why police and library and parks are the biggest chunks is because we don't really have other revenue sources to go towards those. So, so a lot of our areas, they work for water and sewer and solid waste too, so we allocate some overhead expenses to those. Or in executive admin, we get to use hotel motel tax and light and power transfer to pay for some of our stuff. So it doesn't show as big in here. But really, when it comes down to it, the way that the services are provided and the funds received, it makes the best sense to have police, public libraries and parks, leisure services paid out of, almost wholly out of general fund. Again, just a breakdown of kind of the, the tax levy rate, this is where you can see it drop. Our general 810, that's a state mandated, you can't go above that for general operations. But then we get to add back in employee benefits. Debt service, you see where it dropped down and then came back up. And then just civic center, insurance, and then 411, police retirement. There are other levies that we could add. There's an emergency levy that you can use for basically anything you want, but it's .27, so it's 27 cents. And there's a library levy that can be approved by the voters to help library costs for the district that's direct. And I think Sarah can talk a little bit about that when she comes up. And then again, here's just land values over time. So now, I apologize for all those who come after me with my piles of paper. I want to go through a general fund summary and then we'll do as we always do in a time-honored tradition, start with the police department. This is a way detailed breakdown of general fund revenues and expenditures. But you can see here, again, we just talk about kind of where everything comes from and then the overall number. So with, before transfers, last year's budget was 5.9 million. Our projected is 5.9 million and the proposed is 5.8 million. And then with transfers, we add 9,930 compared to transfers out last year to be right at that 5.8 million in total revenues for the general fund. Again, last year 5.85, projected 5.84, and this year 5.8. We'll walk through all of these individually, so I won't spend a lot of time on budgets or changes, but just see all the little pieces of the pie that go into this that then we work on for the last month and a half or so to say, how's it all going to fit? Overall, here's the important point down here at the bottom. Our net change in fund balance, zero. We're showing a balanced budget again for this year. Yes, it is required by the law, but we're still proud to have a balanced budget.
Washington can't do it, so we should be proud of that.
Thank you, Chris. Again, breakdown of revenues, again, for you guys here. Hotel motel tax, we're showing a bit of an increase in there for the new hotel, but that money is dedicated to go back to the hotel. So the 160 that we have had, that's been just with the hotels that we have in town. So we know that there will probably be a hit to some of those. And we know that there'll probably be more of an increase than this number here, but that's all dedicated money, so we're not really showing changes with that. The rest, permits and licenses, not a lot of adjustments there. Again, cable franchise fee is fairly fixed. And payments and lieu from light and power is down a little bit, and I think that's based on just forecasts from this year. Again, library fees, they, some, a lot of these areas show their own revenues and they'll talk, directors will talk about that themselves as needed. Civic center room rent, we've talked about that, that's still something that we'll discuss. We're projecting about a thousand dollar increase based on this year's rentals. And I think that's something that we could look at by council resolution would be, I think that's resolution, or is that ordinance tab? Resolution, is adjusting those. And I know we talked about that before. Again, with pricing, whether it's a golf course here, whatever it is, it's, where's that sweet spot of enough to make sure we're recovering costs, but not pricing ourselves out of the market for meeting space? We have cemetery revenues broken down, golf shop, pro shop, golf and pro shop revenues that Tab can talk about. And then contributions down here. Some of these, these dollars down here are for economic development. So light and power contributes to economic development, the health center contributes, and then we have a few private contributions. We are not budgeting anything from the county, nor are we budgeting anything from other communities. In the past, we've gotten either per capita or dollar amounts from like Shell Rock and Denver. We didn't really want to ask for that this year. Instead, our philosophy is, we're always available for a phone call. And if you want to partner on a major project or need some additional help, then we can do a contract for service and spell it out rather than just a flat transfer. Street lighting, it's actually shows as a revenue because we get our streetlight expenses reimbursed to us. And then we just have some miscellaneous revenue there. Down here, we have, again, fines and forfeitures, restitution and court fines, again, based on experience. A lot of these aren't fancy forecasts. Some in the utilities are a little more involved with regression analysis and looking at long-term trends and, and factors. And others are a balance of experience and where do we think things are kind of going to get that middle ground. And then interest income, $4,600 on, a lot of money in the bank, but that's okay. And then general fund revenues, you can see down at the bottom, so everything foots. Again, at a glance, but we'll walk through the details. With that, I think that maybe the best option is to go through our public safety areas of police, fire and ambulance and then see how we're doing for time and maybe take a quick stretch break. So Chief Purcell.
Did I miss a joke? All right, well, first of all, thank you very much for giving the opportunity to present our budget for this upcoming year. We'll just walk through the budget. And if you have any questions while I'm going through it, please be sure to stop me and, and ask those, or if you wanted to save them to the end, that's fine as well. Start of the budget, you'll see our mission statement at the beginning of the budget. We do strive to be a service-oriented, public safety organization that is dedicated to serving the citizens of Waverly. Listed below that, you'll see our organizational chart that lists the personnel within the Waverly Police Department. You'll note that it is broken down into two divisions, the patrol division and investigative division. And we have a captain overseeing each one of those divisions. On the next page is our, our activity cover sheet. And every department, we, we break that down, we have an activity cover sheet. And our ultimate goal is to provide a safe community and respond to the needs of the citizens. And I have listed four objectives for next coming years, community relations, equipment, training and department policy. Within community relations, we have four items that I've highlighted. Those. Oh, okay. All right, thanks. The first one in community relations ties into our strategic plan goal of enhance community engagement and communications. And in two thousand fourteen, these programs allowed us to talk to over four thousand citizens. And that's not contacts, you know, through normal law enforcement interactions as far as calls for service, but these are programs that we've set up where either law enforcement officers went out to meet with citizens or the citizens came into the law center to meet with us, whether it be tours or special programs. We want to continue programs focused on building a strong relationship between the citizens and the police department. We want to continue participating in the national night out. We will be starting our sixth citizens' police academy starting in February. For those that haven't thought about doing that yet, our deadline is the twentieth. We have, I think, one spot open yet, so if you thought about doing it, now's the time to get in. And then also, we want to continue developing and offering programs like Lunch of the Lost, Child Safety Day and Internet Safety for Kids. Within equipment, and we'll touch on that a little bit when we get into the details, in this year's budget, it touches on our, the city strategic plan of sustaining services and upgrading infrastructure. We have two major items that we will be purchasing this year that we have planned for, budgeted for, and one of them is the replacement of our outdated patrol in-car video cameras with the arbitrator system. We started that project this year and the second half will be coming next year and we'll show the line item for that in our budget. And then also, we'll be replacing three of our patrol vehicles. We typically rotate those every three years. This year, we extended it one additional year because we had more equipment that we're gonna need to purchase. We went, we went away from the Crown Victorious because they are no longer an option and some of the vehicles to replace that are a little bit more expensive, so it allowed us an extra year to plan for that. And we can talk a little bit more about that when we get into that line item. Within training, you know, it supports the strategic plan for sustaining services. We want to continue to do our in-service training through our certified instructors. Our in-service training program ensures employees maintain proper certification areas like firearms, defensive tactics, first aid CPR. And then our department policy, we will continue to review and update policy and procedures to reflect any legal changes, issues, any that comes down the pike on that. All right, on the third page is a listing of our department's expenditures. That is broken down into three areas, every department will have the same areas, it'll be personnel services, services and commodities, and any capital expenditures that apartment may have. In there in personal services, makes up salaries, insurance and work comp are the, are the major portions of that. Within services and commodities, want to highlight the, the major expenditures in that is within the section you'll see training, vehicle maintenance, contributions to other agencies, which is our law center contribution, we pay twenty seven percent of the cost for the law center. The Bremner County pays for the remainder of that. Our operating, well, animal control, as we move down. Animal control is our cost for the collection of any animal at large and to getting that down to Cedar Bank Humane Society and then, and paying for those services when, for whatever happens to them down there. Operating supplies includes clerical supplies, does have a replacement of a computer in there and it's where we budget for our ammunition for our training and for our duty ammunition that we carry. And then our fuel. We are asking, or we have asked, we were asked to keep the services and commodities flat by Phil, and so you're showing a slight decrease from the previous year's budget of about eighteen hundred dollars. And so we worked hard at doing that. Within the capital expenditures, we have budgeted for the replacement of those three vehicles. We are recommending the purchase of, of the Ford Police Interceptor Utility All Wheel Drive. You'll probably seen a few of the county sheriff's departments have switched to those. This decision was based upon the information we received after studying the veil of options and Phil and I sat down, if any of you'd like to see the study, but I presented about a twenty-two page study and went over the pluses and minuses of that, and that is our recommendation and we can certainly talk about that. If you have questions, I can certainly do that. The ones that we studied were the Ford Police Interceptor, the Dodge Charger All Wheel Drive, the Ford Police Interceptor Sedan, the Chevy Caprice and the Chevy Tahoe. And some of the, get past the dynamics of them all, some of the areas that we reviewed, and you want to throw those up there too? What'd you feel? Ergonomics is, is one of the major things that we looked at when we were looking at vehicles. You know, as a patrol officer, your, your normal shift hours are, they work nine hour shifts, typically twelve hours if they have the overtime, so they spend a lot of time inside the vehicles. So ergonomics was an important factor. And when you look at the ergonomics of the front seat, the rear seat and visibility, and, and these were, they come from a study that the Michigan State Police does every year annually and outside of the Tahoe, which we're not looking at, the rating is, is quite a bit higher for the, the all wheel drive. Let's see. Here's just a highlight of the combined ergonomics of the entire area. The interior volume by cubic feet. The front volume. I don't know how much you guys want to know here. All right, so if.
Why the, why the utility for municipal operations?
Yeah, if you look at the rear, rear volume there, that's, the rear seat, it doesn't include the trunk space or the, the trunk or the rear compartment of a utility. And so that's a good example alone of for our visitors that we transport in our vehicles, you know, there is not a whole lot of room in the back seats of those cars and it's not meant to be comfortable, but a, a lot of times, people can't sit. For, for bigger folks, we actually have to lay them down in the backseat and strap them in. And that's, that's not best case scenario and it's not appropriate. And so what a lot of departments did, are doing, which we would have had it done as well, is get special cages where they're molded differently. And what that does is it scoots everything in places, the seats forward in all the patrol vehicles, or you have to have split cages in the back so you can, basically you take away your passenger side compartment by moving all that forward to get extra space in there. So there's, there's a big disadvantage to that. The other thing that happens with that is the cost of those transport cages about doubling cost. So even though we're with the utility, we're gonna have to separate the, the back of the vehicle, we'll have two cages in the utility vehicle, it's still cheaper than getting one of those transport vehicles. We covered ground clearance, yeah.
Biggest question I would have with them is, is I know with our, the current SUV that you've had, it's, it's been kind of on a more limited patrol as far as it's not, not out as often as the cars have been.
Right.
That, that would be my question, the economics and, and as far as gas mileage and, and operating cost to have those, the utility vehicles on, on the road more often like the cars are, because I know we've had the SUV has not been out as often as the cars have been.
Yep, we looked at fuel economy is one of them. Here's the average of the fuel economy for the, for city EPA. And you'll see that the, the sedan is gonna be your highest at eighteen, but the utility is at sixteen. We were told, our, what we've seen is averages between fifteen and fourteen for the Crown Victoria, so we would actually be increasing our, our fuel economy slightly with the utility compared to the Crown Victoria. And here is the combined EPA. And with the utility, kind of outside of the sedan, it's pretty standard across the board for fuel economy. So I think we'll, we'll be okay there.
Tahoe was on an extended rotation, right?
It was and now that's gonna be back into normal rotation, what it is at this point. We wanted that to last two cycles. And actually, instead of six years, it's gonna be at seven years and that's why we held that back for limited use for, just for those first three years. All right, so, no, good questions. So in the capital expenditures, at, at the bottom, you'll see, also see the eighty-seven, I'm sorry, seventy-eight, that is the second half of that, that in-car replacement from the previous, and that project is split between those two years and that'll be the, the second half of that. During the budget process, we were, we were also asked to look at what a five percent reduction would look like in our expenditures. And so based upon the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen budget, the, the expenditure would need to be less about eighty thousand dollars to achieve a five percent reduction. And currently, our service and commodities, if you look above, is a hundred and sixty-nine thousand. If you would remove the, the mandatory obligation that we have to the law center of eighty thousand and our fuel costs of thirty-nine, we don't have about fifty thousand lasts, left. So there isn't enough room within our operational costs to achieve a five percent reduction since we don't, we don't have a lot of fluff or pad within our budget and that's one of the benefits to present in a line item budget is you know where the dollars are going. So the total compensation of a step-two patrol officer when you include salary, health insurance, pension, uniform allowance is about eighty-two thousand. So the only way that we could achieve a five percent reduction within our budget is to eliminate a police officer position from our, from our roles. And just to highlight what that would look like, you know, currently there are sixteen officers with our department. We've talked about it before at another budget meeting, the state average says that we should have at seven, at least seventeen or eighteen officers for our size of the community and we're not planning for that or asking for that. We would like to maintain it sixteen. Reducing the staffing levels will influence the capacity of our department to provide the same services in the same ways that we have in the past. The areas that would see the biggest impact to reduce staffing would be our response time, follow-up investigations, our ability to provide training to the officers and our community programs. Changes in the delivery of our services we provide is a big concern. As we continue to try to build relationship with the community, delivery of services can have a direct impact on our ability to grow the community policing philosophy. And, and the more, kind of lies the problem is, as we need to build those, one of the things that ends up going away is a lot of community programs and so it deteriorates that, the ability to, to have that community policing focus. And, and so they kind of offset each other a little bit. So it's difficult to continue those programs to promote community policing. Since we do not have a, any plans or anticipate any, any increases in the staff, we understand the citizen-to-officer ratio will continue to spread as our community hopefully grows. To continue, to continue to deliver the high levels of community protection and emergency responsiveness that we, we have and will need to continue developing, we need to continue new and innovative techniques to address the needs of the community. And one of those advantages that we've done is try to take advantage of, of new, new technology and some of that technology is being presented within this budget and that's the arbitrator system and also one of the major projects we had last year with our mobile data terminals to keep the patrol officers within the vehicles as opposed to being at the law center. Is there any questions on the expenditure side where we can move on to the fourth page, which is the department's revenue?
Well, I have a quick question.
Yeah.
Going to the four-year cycle versus the three, have you seen a lot of maintenance issues in that fourth year with the vehicles or?
We're about halfway through the year in our fourth year rotation and we're already projected high. It's, it's been difficult to keep the vehicles in rotation. At three years with the patrol vehicles, we're about at a hundred thousand is where the, the three years puts us. We're showing with vehicles going down, we got some vehicles that are getting a little bit more mileage, will be about a hundred and thirty plus and that's just a lot of miles on a, on a patrol vehicle for city driving. Yeah, so we are, right now, we are running high on our maintenance costs and so I would like to stay the same at the three years rotation, yeah.
Can you, I know we recently just hired two new officers.
Yes.
I believe they're in the academy, if that's true.
Right.
How soon before you're back to your full staffing levels or?
Tom Power and Andrew Meyer went to the academy on January fifth and they will come back to us in April and then Officer Power will have about three or four, well, about two or three weeks left on field training and Meyer will have a, about a month and a half yet when he gets back. So May and then probably first part of June for, so it's a long process.
I know right now you're kind of having to shuffle some people around.
Right, and we have, we have somebody on work comp right now and we just had another person go down on injury yesterday that we'll find out next week of, and, and that's the difficult problem is, is staffing levels once we start having injuries.
That's one that's curious, thank you.
Yep.
And just a quick question on using lost dollars, I guess, for vehicle replacement. We kind of questioned that last year, that we're kind of tapping into a fund that will potentially go away soon. We still feel that's a good approach and.
Well, if I can answer just, the, the dollars this year is about six thousand is lost. The, if you look in there, the, the ninety-nine thousand nine hundred and thirty for the cost of that, only six thousand of that is coming from lost, the rest of it is coming from our capital equipment reserve, but it, but it does bring up the.
Your loss, I think the, the note, the, the idea that we had with that is, that's a funding sources available. If we make it available, it needs to be for capital items, not ongoing salaries and continuing obligations. I think that as we look at renewal of the lost dollars, where do those need to go? What can those be used for? And quite frankly, it's using those dollars so that there's not an impact on property tax rates.
I guess I'll put in a plug for, as we look at renewing loss to continue to have some of it go towards this. Just looking at some of the joint responses that we do with the number of people coming to Waverly for employment and shopping, that type of thing, a lot of our services are for non-tax paying residents, so it seems legitimate use of lost funds. They're, they're generating that dollar for us, they can help us pay for the response and support and.
And I think, I agree with all of that because you try to spread that, you know, to who's, who's benefiting and who's paying and I shouldn't stand up, I feel weird sitting down. And I think that the, along with that, people in the community already view lost as public safety dollars and so it's probably one of the more integrated use for an extension or a renewal of that. The other thing I want to mention just real quickly here, I forgot to talk about the five percent, ten percent. The directors will talk to you today about five percent, knowing that ten percent is essentially double. And going into it, our discussions were, don't give us fluff stuff of how to make up five percent, tell, what would we have to do and what would the service be? So that's why Rich walked through it this way and then you'll hear our other directors talk about their areas about what, where does the money go and what would that look like? So thank you for reminding me about that.
Sure, I love talking about.
Nice job.
All right, if there's no question, any further questions about the expenditures? Again, we can have questions at the end, we'll go on to the fourth page where there's the department revenue. I'll just kind of highlight some of those areas. The animal control fee is the money that we receive for collection of animals running at large that get picked up by citizens. So they do receive a fee. So they do receive a fee for us picking them up. And court fines is the portion of the fine that we receive from traffic citations that are issued. Non-meter fine are those parking tickets. Pucunary is the restitution that we receive from the processing of OWIs. When we have an OWI that goes to court, we can request reimbursement for the expenses that we incur for processing an OWI, and that's what those are for. And the transferring is the, the money that just Phil talked about, coming in from the capital reserve. So finally, the last entry is the tax askings that you'll see. And as we were asked by Phil, we were presenting the budget flat, or there's a slight decrease in the tax askings this year from the police department, it was about one percent. And that's about it. Is there any questions you have? Yeah, yep. So if you look in our, well, yeah, on the organization chart, about personnel, but it breaks down. We have the two patrol captains, and then we have two sergeants. That's in charge of second shift and third shift. And then we have one investigator, and then we have our patrol staff. What's that? Yes, and we have one office manager, a secretary. Any questions for me? All right, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Good morning. It's always a pleasure following the police department because we're probably the best value in town when it comes to public safety with our volunteer fire department. If we just get the police to volunteer, we'd have it made, wouldn't we? Sorry, chief. Your first page shows our fire department's structure, how we, how we operate. As I said, we're a one-hundred percent volunteer department. And we hold our election of officers every December. And it's all, all of our officers are voted on by the members themselves. A couple, just quick information things for you folks. Our average response time is between five and ten minutes. That takes in about sixty percent of our calls. And that is from the time we get the page, wherever we may be, home, bed, wherever the case, whatever the case is, to the first truck on the scene is between five and ten minutes. So if, if you ever want to challenge, wake up in the middle of the night, throw your clothes on, get down to the fire station, put your turnout gear on, get on a truck, get out to wherever you're going. And we, we feel we do a pretty good job of that. We processed about ninety-eight calls last year. Of those, two-thirds were city calls, be it false alarms, fires, car accidents, whatever the case may be. And the other third of that was to rural areas that we service. We average about thirteen to fourteen firefighters per call that get to respond daylight, or during the day and night. We spent right at eleven hundred and thirty-six hours on fire calls last year. We spent nineteen hundred hours on training last year and an additional three hundred and fifty hours in meetings last year. So as a volunteer fire department, if you take it over the average of the, the full department, you'll spend about a hundred and twenty-five volunteer hours as a volunteer firefighter. So we're pretty proud of our guys. They do a great job. We feel very fortunate to have the equipment we do and the support of the community and the council. And with that, our budget is relatively flat. We have talked about an increase for the firefighter pay this year, and...
You want me to talk about that briefly?
If you want to dance on that, I'll let you.
Okay, yeah, I'll dance on that. I'll take that challenge. So what we've talked about this year is, right now, our volunteer firefighters get paid five dollars a meeting and five dollars a call. And the way that the actual mechanism of that works is it's a contribution that goes to the Fire, Firefighters Association? Firemen's Association? The Association, and then they keep track and pay that out. There have been some recent things around the state on mechanism. And then we also believe with discussions with the fire department and even the rural fire board that we should look at moving that five dollars per call and per meeting up to more like fifteen dollars per meeting or per call. That sounds like a lot, but it's not by hour. It's not by clocking in and clocking out. It's more by per, per event. And I think we have a rundown that we can provide too, that breaks out those anticipated costs. The other change with that, not only in the amount kind of stipend per call, would be that we would actually direct pay the firefighters quarterly. So they would have to keep track of the events and basically do it like a time card. So that way, we could track payments to the individual volunteers. Now, it's quite a change from how we've done it in the past, but I think that based on some conversations Bill and I have had and Jack and I have had, it's probably going to be a cleaner way to do it. And I think the other question is, what's a fair value for the time and the effort and the, the work that's put in by the volunteers? We know it's not a paid department. We don't want to move it to that. We actually cannot go to hourly pay because there are some issues with Fair Labor Standards Act as to what's a volunteer and what's an employee. But knowing that it's probably not huge dollar amounts, and we'll, like I said, we'll get that out to you guys. Our thought for next year would be to convert over to a fifteen-dollar per call per meeting. That's still going to be a fairly flat budget, because I believe last year we put money, extra money in the budget for doors and equipment. And I think this kind of balances that out. Is that right?
Correct. If you look down at our budget at the very bottom line, we were one forty last year and one fifty this year. However, last year's budget does not show our thirty, I believe it was thirty-five thousand dollars in the new door hardware that, that we were, that we were purchasing. And that was put into a different fund for Jack's bookkeeping request. And so overall, our overall budget is down about twenty thousand. Our guts of the budget without the, the other capital expenditures is up about ten because of the wage increase. Any questions?
Is there any, what's your current lifespan of their trucks and equipment and stuff that you have right now?
We run them thirty years on everything. We're setting quite well. We've, see, our next one will be up in nineteen for replacement. That'll be a pumper. More, that'll, that is also a rural and city split with that one. So fifty percent from the city, fifty percent from the rural. And that is another item. We also receive rural budget money to help operate the department. And this year, that's right at fifteen thousand dollars. So they contribute quite a minimal amount to the total expenditure of the department.
So this budget that you're presenting here would include what you just explained. Is that correct? That ten thousand net increase?
We have to go back and look, because I think we need to add the contributions to other agencies of fourteen thousand. We'll need to basically move into the salaries line and be increased to meet that. And I think what this doesn't, budget doesn't show from last year was the extra equipment and door expense.
Correct.
And those two basically will offset each other for expenses. So the overall fire department budget will be the same as the original proposed last year. It's just moving it around. But we'll get you updated sheets for that.
From what I, oh. Okay, I'm struggling. When we purchase new fire trucks and equipment, I know that it comes, you know, to us for approval and stuff, and the city buys those. But do we do like the, what the police does and, and set, set aside money throughout to build that fund up? Is that how?
Yeah, I think...
Thirty-five thousand a year is set aside.
And it's in the lost budget that they give.
Yes.
Okay. I, I figured we, I, but, yep, yep, yep.
Correct, yep. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Okay, next one. Jim from the Waverly Health Center, type of ambulance.
Good morning. My name is Jim Shute. I'm with the Waverly Health Center. I'm the ambulance director there. Our budget, we have a unique relationship with the city. The hospital pays a portion, the city pays a portion, the county gives us a contribution. Just some background information, this year, we totaled about two thousand sixty-nine runs for the city of Waverly, which we've been having a steady increase since I became a member with the Health Center. Maintenance, we've been able to keep very consistent. That's one thing I like about here. Our units are serviced every one hundred hours, so we work closely with the maintenance department. They're great at catching things before we have a problem with them. That's why we're being able to keep our costs down over the years. Other thing you'll see on us right now is fuel, projected at twenty-nine thousand for a total of forty-three. Do you have any other questions, Phil?
So everybody is aware, the way the ambulance budget works is it's staffed and outfitted for supplies through the Health Center. And the city will pay for maintenance, fuel, and the actual ambulance purchase. And so we do kind of the, the capital side of it, and they do the daily operations. And we'll talk a little bit about here, again, this is another update that we need to add for ambulance purchase in fifteen, sixteen, after July one. And again, we set aside money each year for that. But as, if you read the Register, the Courier, you know that rural EMS is in trouble in the state of Iowa, because most of it is underfunded and not a lot of volunteers for it. We have a pretty good operation here where we're fortunate to have a city-owned hospital who staffs it and trains it and runs it. And then we participate again through this, the, the direct purchase and the, the maintenance. We have talked at lengths about EMS in the future and what it means to Waverly and how Waverly's kind of sphere of influence may have to grow over time just for service and all of that. And so it's something that we're anticipating or, or looking towards. But right now, we think that this partnership is, is working fairly well. I know you've had some changes to your staffing rotations and, and operations up there at the hospital. But that doesn't have a major impact on the ambulance.
Not currently. We'll just have to look at future growth and how we're doing. As Phil was mentioning, countywide, many of the services are having problems with staffing. We actually are pretty good here in Breamer County. We have the same medical director throughout the county, and we operate underneath the same protocols, and we talk to each other quite a bit. So such as Denver, for example, if they don't have a unit available for the day, and they've actually taken, been proactive to hire someone full-time, they are contacting us right away, and we're working and talking mutual aid services and what we're going to provide back and forth. And they also come into Waverly and help us out quite a bit. So we're, Breamer County's setting pretty good right now as far as services that communicate well together with their known problems. The other thing is, the county does provide us with thirteen thousand dollars of fund for us. They do provide the other cities some money also. That's pretty proactive for a county in the state of Iowa. It's quite a good total that they do put out between the services to assist with training and other expenses. I meet with the county once a year and give them an update of our services. And if they're able to contribute more, that's what we do, do ask for every year, but it's based on their budget. But they get an annual update of how we're providing our services. We've got a pretty good service here in Waverly, and we are being progressive compared to many of the communities around us. We have budgeted over the past about fifty-three thousand three hundred for the purchase of a new ambulance, which we are actually up for this year. And I have the prices, and Phil and I have been talking about that. There are some things that do increase with public safety vehicles, especially fire and police. Certain safety items have to be met, and then certain emissions have to be met. And that has driven up the cost of vehicles a little bit. So that's something we need to prepare for. We are talking about, we'll need to increase probably for the next purchase, increase a little bit more that we're putting away because of those costs.
About fifty-three thousand a year is what we put away each year.
Fifty-three-three right now is what we've been putting away. We probably should move that up to around sixty. So emissions is the big driver. It costs us about eleven-five more on this next purchase that we're coming up just to meet the emission standards with the urea tanks and the additional requirements that, that the, that are imposed on emergency vehicles. Just another note, calls for service, like I said, was two thousand sixty-nine for this year. We have a very good response time here in Waverly and Breamer County. Actually, to the point, I've, I do something that's a little unusual, is I measure from the time the law center gets the call to the time we're on the scene. We work together closely as a group, and that's something that normally can't be done when you're evaluating a system. But we have a, a good group of people working together and a good group of organizations. Do I have any other questions?
I just, I don't really have a question, but just since all three services just talked. I mean, I've unfortunately had to call nine-one-one a couple of times in my life, and one was nine or ten years ago, and one was recently. And the response time is literally insane. I mean, with the officers show up immediately and the ambulance shows up, it's, it seems like a minute. I mean, I know it's three or four or five or whatever it is, but it literally is just almost instantaneous. So all three departments, I think, just do a great job with that, so.
Something that Rich puts in his budget for training, he doesn't talk about, is the hospital. We help provide like the CPR training for them, some of the HIPAA training, some of the other stuff, so they don't have to go out of town to do it. That keeps us really, really tight. The other morning, I went on a call. The officers were there right with us. They knew what equipment to get out the rig to bring into the house while we were working. We've, the hospital just did a very, very interesting campaign for a CPR device. And Emily was a big part of that, our CEO, Jamati, my boss, Joanne Nathem, and working at getting CPR devices here in the community. They should be arriving hopefully within thirty days, but we were able to purchase three of them. And that was a cost of thirteen, thirteen-five apiece. I've already talked to Rich this morning. That's something we're going to show the officers, because that, that's going to be huge on our ability to deliver services. So we are a very progressive service here. Any other questions? And you all, you are welcome to come visit us.
Turn the front door, not the back door, right?
Yeah. Thank you. So, take a stretch break?
Yeah, I think we can take about a five or ten, ten-minute or five-minute?
Shoot for five.
Shoot for five?
Probably a little longer.
Okay. Take a, take about a five-minute break and stretch.
Do a ten-minute break, it turns into fifteen.
What I really want to say is, the public safety.
Good morning. How are you doing? No, this morning is the city budget meeting. We're just taking a break. Tomorrow is, tomorrow is scholarship day. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Well, I just moved this way because I'm wondering if you can hear that. But for me, I would just rather have everything.
I'm still, I'm still like to have, be able to write. I just, to me, if I, it's a combination thing, if I'm writing it physically, not just.
Yeah, and a lot of people say it just sticks, they retain better that way.
Just for me, Phil, and I don't take a lot of notes, you know? It's, my kids always, when I teach, you know, they're like, can I get a copy of your notes? I'm like, you don't want a copy of my notes because it's not going to tell you anything.
Yeah, yeah.
Because it's a handful of bullet points, and that's all I need to remind me of what I am covering.
Right.
But I do need something, but it's that kind of, I also use a whole mean trick on my kids that I would allow them to have a cheat sheet for tests.
Uh-huh.
They could have, you know, as long as it was handwritten.
Mm-hmm, uh-huh.
Yeah, they could do a cheat sheet.
Yeah.
And, I can't tell you how many kids would tell me, hardly ever use it. A number of kids would come back to me after they went to graduate and would come back and go, well, I still do it in college. I do it for every class and I do a little cheat sheet because it just is a great way of recapping me more information and studying.
That's a good idea.
That's, that's really what it is. Sure, now you're going to walk outside.
I told you a five-minute break, we turned it into longer.
We do have a quorum.
Start her up.
In town, we approve the budget when they come in.
Okay.
You're going to have public hearings, unfortunately, can't move that. Phil's relaxing again. Yeah. You can scoot it in so you can reach better. Life sits on the edge of your seat, that's so our feet can hit the ground.
Kids are on the way to Minneapolis.
Oh.
They're taking videos while driving?
Yeah, well, she's driving.
It was the same.
I was watching the wrestling meet on my iPad last night, streaming of it, and I was thinking that there were about three or four little kids constantly running in front of the front bleachers. And one of them looked like Emily's girl, and I was wondering if they were all there.
Probably. That would not surprise me.
You've done your part for the morning.
They were having a great time. They kind of even seemed to know a little bit about what was going on with the wrestling. By their jet.
Yeah, I think they've gone through a couple.
We do a steps that are probably, probably recorded in the camp.
Yeah.
I lost Phil.
We'll see you Tuesday then.
Yep.
Okay, you good to go? Okay, we'll bring ourselves back into session here. And our next department up here is Public Works, so we'll turn it over to Mike.
Yep, the Public Works Department consists of eleven different divisions for budgeting, and I'm going to cover four of them over the next five to ten minutes here. So get you back on schedule so you can move on to Library and Leader Services here. We're going to, the four divisions that we're going to touch upon are Public Works Administration, the Engineering Division, Streets General, and Equipment Services. Public Works, as I said, consists of, for budget purposes, eleven different divisions. There are twenty-nine full-time staff, and then we have an additional eight seasonal and permanent part-time staff that are employed as well. Sounds like a lot of people, but when you spread it out over lots of different divisions, we have just really kind of a few people in a lot of different areas. Like the Waste of Our Treatment Facility, it's a twenty-four, seven-day operation. And there's only three people there, Ward Division, three people, Sanitary and Dorm Sewer Line Maintenance, two people. Streets has five, Solid Waste has five, and Equipment Services, two. So, you know, we have a lot of different skilled people within the Public Works Department. So, Public Works Administration consists of two staff members for budgetary purposes, myself and the office manager. And we primarily administer contracts, whether they are construction contracts or consultant contracts, and just involved in a lot of different things. Additionally, we put out a quarterly Public Works newsletter. Coincide with the various seasons, winter, spring, summer, and fall. In addition, we do a fifth newsletter that centers on hazard mitigation. Primarily like to get that out in the spring so it coincides with the spring melt because flooding has been one of Waverly's major issues in the past. It's also our opportunity to touch upon projects, whether it be in the newsletter and the hazard, the quarterly newsletter, or the hazard mitigation newsletter. This one focuses in on the Dry Run Creek improvements that are going to be bid here in February and will hopefully get started in March, late March, early April. Throw up the line item there. Within the Public Works Administration budget, it's primarily all labor. There is a few line items for office supplies, replacement of like computers. Additionally, items like service for telephone, miscellaneous contracts. There's actually near-departmental costs for our computer servers that this is, you'll see this in lots of different budget items. And this is like our contribution towards the City Hall computer system and servers. So beyond that, it's pretty much about ninety-eight percent personnel costs. We do charge our time to projects. So as we spend time developing construction projects in-house or administering other contracts, consultant contracts like we are right now with the Dry Run Creek, we do charge our time to those projects. Time spent not on specific projects is then split between and allocated to water, sewer, and solid waste. So like development of budgets and those types of things would be non-specific project costs that then get allocated out. Additionally, we are very much involved in economic development. We're kind of a member at the table during those discussions as it relates to a lot of infrastructure and service that may need to be provided. Any questions on Public Works Administration? If not, moving on, we have Engineering. So within the Engineering Department, we design about a third of our projects in-house. We inspect about two-thirds of the projects with our engineering techs. Additionally, a subdivision work going on, we are onsite monitoring and inspecting that work as well. We have like a secretary, and if we're fully staffed, we'd have three. Everyone's, I think, well aware of the unfortunate accident that occurred last October and we lost a member of our family in the city here. So going forward, we do feel it's important to fill that position. This coming year though, we are proposing that we backfill that position with some seasonal people. We want to look at like the engineering program at Hawkeye Tech, seeing if we can get a couple of people up here. We would assign one person to work closely with each of our engineering techs with the idea that if we had the right match for Waverly, one of them may be offered a job full-time later in the year. So that's kind of our plan going forward. We do have a full plate this coming summer with lots and lots of projects going on. Whether it's dog park fencing, we're helping out in that in Denver. Or we've got two major street reconstruction projects going on and a lot of other things on the table. As you've seen, we've just gone through five, we've got five public hearings coming up on February second. Lots of projects being bid February fifth as we get an early start on our construction season.
I guess just one quick comment. I appreciate the direction you're going with trying to backfill for replacements, that type of thing. But I guess just caution that one of the reoccurring themes is getting information in the council in a timely manner to be able to make decisions on. And I can anticipate if the workload's getting heavier and you're using unseasoned people that we don't want to see that get worse, I guess.
So again, this, the Engineering Division is heavy on, as far as... So, again, this, the Engineering Division is, is heavy on, as far as the budget, heavy on personnel, very light on services and commodities and, and other things typically major. You know, these services and commodities tends to be office supplies, telephone service, those types of things. Get down into other capital outlays, we get into replacement of computers and, and vehicles. So, nothing major in this coming year.
We're budgeting, Dan, to your question, we're budgeting the full salary if we need to go that route. But I think one of our thoughts was based on workload and everything else, let's just see, like, not letting it get too far down the road and then we have problems.
Just knowing the lead-up time to get somebody in, get them comfortable and productive, don't want to get behind, I guess.
Here again, the, we allocate the time to the various projects, and then when the unaccounted-for project-specific time is then allocated out, fifty percent water, fifty percent sewer. That's it, questions? Next one is Streets General, and this division is, is kind of a grab-all division for things that don't fit in water, sewer, and solid waste, or road use tax. And one of the major items that we, we see in here is, like, street lighting. And this is a pass-through from Waverly Light and Power, and this is the division that it shows up in. Yeah. And so, Phil can zoom in on here, about eighty percent of the, the total budget here is, is for street lighting, and about $255,000. I think you touched upon where the revenue comes in. This is where it's expensed, but in other account is where the revenue shows up. So, that's, the, the city really has no say in those numbers, it's, it's just a pass-through, revenues equal expenditures on that.
Yeah, that's part of the operating agreement with Light and Power.
Other than that, there is Utilities is a major item for utilities down at the Public Services Center. We also have some uniform expenses coming out of here, as well as things like bridge inspection. So, when we do contract, bridge inspection, I think in particular the rail trails, that is expensed out of here because it really doesn't fit within any other budget. So, it's assigned to this division. This is also where the transfer to, the general fund transfer to the airport shows up, and what we've seen is, is a marked decrease in this. It's been very stable over the past ten years, that Aerial Services has been our, or Cedar Valley Aviation has been our fixed-based operator, and Aerial Services has been our major tenant out at the airport. It, it has been very stable, and we're now seeing another potential drop in that general fund transfer due to some additional rent that we will be able to realize from the Ag Land acquisition in the safety area around the airport.
That's how, that's how many small airports kind of offset their expenses, is they own a lot of farmland, or they own a lot of land out there. So, it's, in addition to the flying, they get the cash rent off the crops, too. So, it's going to be nice to do more of that.
Any questions about the Streets General Division? Hey, then the last one is Equipment Services. We have two mechanics that are part of Equipment Services, and they maintain all vehicles within Public Services, Leisure Services, and then police fire an ambulance. So, they, they do the servicing and maintenance for all, most all equipment across the board. Certainly, things like golf course and parks, they do routine maintenance on their mowers and the like, but when they need assistance, they call upon Equipment Services to provide that help. This one, we, the labor amounts for, I think it's about, it's about half the cost, yeah, about half the cost. And then the other is, it is very heavy on service and commodities because you'll see the purchase of those vehicle maintenance supplies. That is the, the big, major component within the service and commodities. But then down in, in the allocations, we charge for the labor and we charge for the parts. So, when there is work being performed on a garbage truck, the, the solid waste department is, is billed for the labor and the parts and supplies used on that vehicle. Same way at the Police Department, and as Rich indicated, that they're starting to see some additional maintenance costs. And, you know, they're spending more time, those, those squad cars are spending more time down at Equipment Services. And this is where the money goes, and it's, it's billed out.
Internal, internal enterprise.
Yep. Anything else you want to touch upon there?
I have a question with the, I think it's great we have our own mechanics and everything like that, but how, how do you charge in relation to, like, let's say I took it to a private shop or a car dealership? Do they use the same kind of pricing structure?
No, they don't. We, we bill out one hundred and twenty-five percent of our, of our labor charge. So, if the, the benefit cost for, for an employee is, say, forty dollars an hour, we would charge fifty dollars an hour to cover some additional overhead because, you know, when they, they go to continuing education classes and those types of things, those aren't billed out, obviously, so we, we bill a little bit extra to cover some of those expenditures. Additionally, one item I would like to point out here, under miscellaneous contracts, we have software contracts to annually be updating our, our software because vehicles are constantly being updated and changing, so we have to annually be updating our, our vehicle software in order for the mechanics to be able to diagnose and maintain our equipment, whether, again, you know, anything from, from garbage trucks to fire trucks, to squad cars and ambulances, they're, they're maintaining all of it.
There was a question in our planning session about outsourcing some of that or cost-benefit, and we went through the records and used to actually do that, so I don't know if Brian or Mike wants to talk about it, but it was back when we just had one mechanic and found that it was actually costing us more in time and missed fixes and missed issues. And so, when we went to two, we've had significantly better uptime and reduced costs by doing it in-house. But do you guys have more details you want to share, either one of you?
I don't, I mean, I just know that when you go to a dealership or whatever, they pretty much have a book, and it says, okay, this is what you charge to do a brake job, and how much per hour, and that kind of, and then parts are parts, but I wonder how we charge it inside the city.
Yeah, that's how we charge it. I think one of the other tremendous values about trying to keep as much of it in-house as possible is they are very familiar with every single thing that's been done to, that squad car, that ambulance, that pickup, that garbage truck, they know everything about it.
And I think for scheduling, they do know, yeah, a brake job's fifty-two minutes, and that's what we need to set our target as to get the next piece in.
It's pretty hard to take a fire truck to a dealership and have them change.
Well, yeah, I mean, even just taking a pickup or something, you're at the, you know, they might not have time for you. We can get you next week, well, that's not going to happen.
And I can speak for, I think, both of our mechanics, they're very, very much looking forward to the new facility out at Public Services. Many of the vehicles, they simply can't get indoors to work on them, you know, and having to work outside on a vehicle, you know, today's maybe not too bad, but, but just a couple of weeks ago, when it was, you know, ten, ten below zero outside, and you got wind, and you can't get the vehicle inside to, to do the necessary repair work, they're very, very much looking forward to that new facility.
I don't know if that got picked up or not, but the idea.
What Brian was saying, especially for our large equipment, the high-dollar, six-figure equipment, that we see tremendous resale or trade-in value because of the way we maintain them and keep them clean. And our philosophy, too, of in general, trying to trade them before they start costing us a whole lot of money in, in maintenance. Now, we have an option, we can go through citizen requests now in Health and Social Services, or we can just go right into Library and Leisure Services and come back to this, it's, it's up to the council.
We've got the library board sitting here. I'd rather just go through the departments, if that's okay.
And maybe we can address these when we, next week, actually, when we talk about capital, because they all kind of work together with some of the dollar amounts, is that okay? Okay, all right. Library. Oh, Hank is here, Hank is here, I'm sorry. Hank, would you, would you like to come back next weekend?
Stay with me, stay with me.
Okay. All right, in that case, good, Sarah?
All right. Okay, I'll run through the library's budget request very quickly, just to let you know how the library board plays into this project. We have, the library board has several committees, and they have one called the Budget and Finance Committee. So, in October, we start getting our budget presentation ready, and that committee of the board combs over it very carefully. And then this budget request that's being brought to you today has been approved by the full library board. So, that's where we stand. Just a few quick words about our goals and objectives for fifteen, sixteen. We just recently finished a long-range planning process where we reinforced that one of our main goals here at this public library is to grow young readers. And so, in our new plans for the coming year, and, you know, the years following that, we have some, lots of ideas for ways that we can do outreach to reach those children that might not get to come to the library, or as often. So, we've got all kinds of new ways that we're looking to take those services out. And right now, we do things like taking storytime out to the daycares and to the home daycares and preschools. So, that's just one example. I think how, how all of the library services fit into the overarching city goals as, as we worked out in the last year here with the council is, falls under that quality of life issue. So, you know, promoting health of mind, body, and spirit, I think we do a great job of that at the library through lots of our programs and services, improving cultural opportunities through music and, and different programs. And last of all, green spaces, we do have one, one little green space in the city of Waverly that has really developed into a beautiful garden on the west end of the building. So, those are some of the tie-ins. Just a few, a few notes about our budget. The collection, one of our goals for the collection is to get ourselves to what the State Library of Iowa would consider kind of the highest level for accreditation for what we spend on our collection, and they measure that as a percentage of your budget. So, right now, we stand at about eleven percent. Our goal is to move closer to the fifteen percent target that the State Library sets out there as kind of the A, the A level. I will say that even though that's our goal, this year's budget request is not reflect any additional funds for materials because we were trying very hard to keep a flat budget. We know that a flat budget for material means, materials means that we'll be buying less. As we, you know, break into buying more and more eBooks and print books and databases, those things don't go down in price. So, if we are able to increase our percentage this year, it will be with outside money, either using funds that we receive through the State Library, which it amounts to about ten or twelve thousand dollars a year, or every year we receive a couple thousand dollars in gifts. So, we'll be trying to reallocate as much of that as we can to materials as we do most years. Technology, we are currently in the midst of a digitizing project for our Waverly newspapers on microfilm, and that this year has been funded by grants. What we'd like to do with the new scanner at the library is start the digitization process of the Waverly historic photos. So, that's a piece of technology, equipment that we're going to need next year. We also, with our ILS, our Integrated Library System that runs our catalog and runs our patron database and item database, we have some upgrades that we want to make that will pull in all of our eBooks and other electronic resources so that they're right there in our catalog, and we make them even easier for our users to have access to. So, one less step that they have to take to get to it. Building and equipment, every eight years with our building, we are supposed to do the exterior maintenance, which we did after the first eight years, and believe it or not, we're actually at the sec, at the end of the second eight years now in that building. So, we have about eight thousand dollars, that's actually budgeted in the Capital Improvements Fund, is that something we talk about next week? Okay, so that's not reflected here, but we can talk about that later. There is, I've asked also in that budget for some money for some furniture, namely tables that we could rearrange computers on. We're right now working with a building consultant on a space utilization study, which just kind of looks at our layout and says, okay, after sixteen years of rearranging things, little bits here and there as we have needed to, how could we rearrange things in this same space that would make more sense and, and meet some of our needs that we've been looking for space for teens, or, you know, it, one, one issue that causes the need for these tables is that we're going to clear out one of the small meeting rooms of computers and make that a space for just another meeting space because we, we do need more meeting spaces. As the year goes on, we'd also like to transition our ICN room, which previously was about the only telecommunications means that we had fifteen, sixteen years ago, transition that into a more flexible space for public meetings. As far as personnel in this budget request, we really are just maintaining the exact same staffing level. I don't know what the actual increase was, but it, the increase from the previous year was due to folks who are still on the five-step scale, moving up the ladder and whatever cost of living increase there might be, and increases to health insurance. We have just under eleven FTEs, between ten and a half and eleven FTEs, and there are three of us who are full-time. The rest are some version of, of part-time, and Brad, of course, is our shared building person. I think that's all I'm going to say about our goals, and I'm not going to, I don't plan to go line by line through the budget. Like I said, it's been combed through very, very completely by the library's Budget and Finance Committee. I believe the services and commodities section of our budget, we were able to reduce by just a little less than half a percent, so we tried very hard to keep that at zero as well. For the most part, I think we should be fine with that. It does make me nervous on some line items like repair and maintenance of structure, for instance, because, or repair and maintenance of equipment. With a sixteen-year-old building, once in a while, we have a boiler problem or a heating and cooling problem. And if we have a good year, we should, we should be just fine. We have a lot of miscellaneous contracts there that, you know, are kind of set, like, the annual maintenance on our HVAC system or the annual fee that we play, pay for our software on our ILS, just so that we can have support on that software.
Want to explain what the ILS is?
Oh, the Integrated Library System, which is our, we work with a Cersei Dynex company, so that's, the IBSTRO catalog is part of that, and then the backend patron database that the staff runs. So, very vital system for us. There's nothing here in capital expenditures. You'll notice at the bottom of this page, there is twenty-one thousand five hundred dollars that's estimated to be transferred in to pay. in to pay our bills from the library's reserve savings account. This is there every year. About half of this money or more comes from the State Libraries in Rich Iowa Program. That is made up of two different funding sources from the state. It's direct state aid, which is just divided amongst all the libraries, and then open access and access plus money, which is a small reimbursement we get for serving folks who are outside our area. And also the interlibrary loan, a small reimbursement for what interlibrary loan we do. So, for instance, someone from Des Moines who's visiting their parents in Waverly can check out something from the Waverly Public Library and then return it to their own library in Des Moines, and all of those transactions have a small reimbursement for us. Alright. Quickly on the revenues. The biggest portion of our revenues come from the county, and this year, we're receiving right at $59,000. The way that's distributed is we belong to the Bremer County Library Association, and together, that association goes to the county supervisors to ask for an allotment for that association. And then based on our circulation and how much we spend on materials, and then just 50% of it is just divvied up among the seven libraries. That, that's the amount that we're receiving. So, the rest of it is from our, from gifts and grants and that restricted contributions line. Fines, fines and penalties, that has gone down probably $5,000 or $6,000 in the last several years. And I, I give part of the credit to our ILS system being able to generate email reminders for items that are coming due. So, I think that's a good thing, that we're, you know, providing a convenience for folks, just little reminders. Okay. If there aren't, oh, I wanted to say a few words about, oh, the 5%, first of all, the 5% reduction. As I explained about our materials budget, because we are, we need a certain percentage of our budget spent on materials to meet State Library standards, and we need to meet those standards to keep our accreditation with the State Library, which I think is important. We really don't have a lot of leeway to lower our materials budget. That would be about the only, there's about four or five lines in the operating budget that include all of our materials expenditures for periodicals, books, databases, all the electronic resources, and that's about $80,000. So, for the, a 5% reduction for us would mean about $42,000 out of our operating budget. That would be the only place we'd have those kind of discretionary funds. But that would also make us ineligible, being, not being accredited would make us ineligible for certain state funds as well. So, that's really not an option. It's not something we want to do, because that would directly hurt patrons a great deal. In fact, I think all the options would. But the only other place we really have to look then is personnel. And so, I tried to, you know, the, the board would have a difficult, some difficult decisions to make. There would be some options. Some libraries choose to close a certain day of the week. And I did some calculating on what that would cost for different days. And for instance, a, a Monday, which is a 10-hour day for us, 10:00 AM to 8:00 PM, would save, throughout the year, would save just under $40,000 or about $38,000. And that's based upon, our, our minimum level of staffing is three, three people in the building at a time, three desk staff in the building at a time. And I really believe that that is a necessary amount for the size of the building and all the traffic we have. And so, that would be approximately what it would equal there. If we tried to do it a different way and take it from the pool of part-time staff hours, that would equal more than one of our part-time people. And it, it could mean something like not doing any outreach at all. You know, we wouldn't have the hours anymore to send people out when the library's not open. We would all be limited to just working, you know, at the building when the library is open to be there for people, but we wouldn't be able to go out to the daycares. Our children's librarian wouldn't be able to go to school class visits. Those are some of the things that could be affected, because that, that $42,000 would equal about 34 hours a week for one of our part-time staff. So, those are just some rough, rough estimates. Yes, I do have benchmarks too. Quickly, I did also want to mention the library levy. This is something Phil and I have just talked about back and forth for a while. There are 79 Iowa cities that have the library levy in place, and it's a 27-cent levy. You do need a referendum required to pass it. So, that, that is a potential in the future for helping generate some income. Cedar Falls, Waterloo, Cedar Rapids, Denver, New Hampton, and Shell Rock are some of the places that have it right now. But it is, it is possible to look at that. Okay, there, there was a request, and I'll just look at, I'll look at the TV as we, as we look at these. A request to look at some benchmarks for how our library stacks up against other libraries in the state of Iowa. So, what I did was I took the list that's on one of the green pages in the front of the book, and all the communities that are listed there that we have compared Waverly against for tax valuations and levies and things like that, I just took that same group. And this, I've got about five sheets to show you. This one is children's programs, because obviously, not every library has the same programming, the same services. So, this is just one measure. This would be, our library is at 633 children's programs per year, which puts us at the top of, top fifth of this group. And this is a group with kind of a nice mix of larger libraries and libraries more our size. So, I think that's something that has been an important part of the Waverly Public Library for a long time, and it, it shows here. Can flip to the next one, which is program attendance. Now, this is total program attendance. So, this would be children's programs, adult programs, teen programs, everything. And this would be the number of people attending programs for the entire year, which we are at 26,000, which again, puts us toward the top of that list as far as providing, providing those kinds of services for folks. Okay? This one is interesting. This is a number I look at quite often, because I think it's a, a better measure of library service than simply looking at the circulation of your items. This is the number of visits per hour on average that each of these libraries has. And we have, for quite some time, been at that 55 to 60 people per hour level. And on this comparison group, we're at 56.5, which puts us in the top half. So, that's a busy place. That's another one of the reasons, that's another one of the drivers, I think, for our level of staffing. Okay. And this one I thought was interesting. I hadn't looked at this one before I ran these numbers, but I think it's an attempt to get at some efficiencies. How much do we spend on staff per library visit? So, kind of equal it out. And that number ends up being $3.28 on average we spend on every visit. And that kind of puts us in the lower half, which in this case, I read that as being good, because we've got some efficiency going there. Alright, and number of FTEs. Like I said before, we're just under 11, 10.96. And in this company, that puts us close to the middle, maybe a little above, but very much in the ballpark.
Just a second. Want to show one thing?
Okay.
Side by side.
So, it looks like Phil's showing, maybe you want to say a few words too?
So, what I'm, making sure my mic's on. What I'm showing here is the side-by-side program attendance compared to number of FTEs. And you can see that the program attendance numbers, so we're in the 40s, 30s, 20 thousands. But then when you look at the FTEs, we're basically 85 down to 11. So, I just think that's kind of another efficiency measure when you put them side-by-side.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Just a quick question. Would you have, I guess the, would you have a comparison of cost of FTEs?
I may have that one. I can, I can look that up. I don't think I have that in this pile. I'm taking this data from the State Library's web collect tool, which allows us to do all kinds of reporting based on the numbers that we've submitted for annual reports. So, that one's probably possible if I haven't already printed it. I'll look at it. This, this one is the percent of budget spent on staff for each of these libraries. And we fall, looks like pretty close to the middle there at 69.4%, which, I mean, my understanding is that two-thirds in that area spent on personnel for service organizations is pretty common.
But I think, you know, something, I always kind of look at Paula, because I think in many ways, it's a similar town, you know, and size and so on. And I mean, one thing that I, you know, they're right there below us with the 69, but very similar, but they did less than half of the children's programming, for example, than that we do. And probably some other activity measures are way down compared to us as well.
It is, it is difficult to find a way to compare libraries to each other, because they're, they never are apples to apples, because of the different emphasis that they have. But I, I'd be happy to email out this information too, so you can take more time and look at it. But I don't know if you have any other questions for me this morning?
Thank you. Tab?
Good morning, and thank you. We're going to start off with our mission statement. We believe in making the good life better by providing safe, modern, well-maintained, and aesthetically pleasing environments for the community of today and tomorrow. That's one of the things we try to adhere to as a whole on the department.
Whatever you need.
This is our, we were asked to bring a, a flat budget. We basically have, in terms of, these are the comparisons of the budget for 14-15, what we're projecting for 14-15, and what we're proposed for 15-16. Worth about $10,000 of each year. And, and the differences in these are mostly, you know, something doesn't cost as much, something costs a little bit more, grants we receive, those types of things. So, that's how we kind of project things. I've put together a budget highlight sheet. Let's make that a little bigger.
I'll do it.
Major initiatives and changes. Phil went through the, the contractual type stuff. We did increase the seasonal maintenance pay scale about buck an hour. We were seeing that we were not getting lots of qualified candidates, so we decided to do that. In administration, office manager is full-time in Leisure Services. It was shared with Economic Development, but when Economic Development hired a full-time secretary, that we made our office manager full-time. Continuation of community calendar or gardens, apply for grants, so no city funds are used. We've not used any city funds yet, except for in-kind type stuff. Continue the food secure network program, continue with adopt lot program. You'll see some highlighted things, some things that are bold. That is, that means it's either in the, the council strategic plan or the park and open space plan that we did in 2011, 2012. Transition from outdoor pool project, new manual procedures. We're going to have some completely new processes of that, so that's going to be lots of fun, I think. The dog park, that was not budgeted in anything, and, and, and we got the money, but it takes a lot of time to do that, and Public Services is helping us at that with some of the, the planning and that sort of thing. Continue to work with InterCog to achieve water trail status. Above that was developing gift, print a gift catalog and dog park handout. Gift catalog is when people can contribute things to us. And the dog park handout is, is a information sheet for people who get there. They'll have the rules and, and contacts and that sort of thing. Apply for grants for trail assistance, maintenance connections, benches, coordinate organizational succession planning. We've got some older people in our department, and, and we may be looking at some reorganization when, when they retire. In the parks, all these are in the park and open space plan. Phase one and two downtown tree ha, rehab. We've got some money budgeted in the parks to remove all the trees downtown that, that need to be removed, replace those with three specific types of trees, so that if we get a bug or if we get a disease, they all won't be wiped out. Plus, a lot of these trees downtown have, have gotten overgrown. Replace utility tractor and attachments. That's a piece of equipment that is on our equipment replacement schedule, and that is shared with the airport. So, this is another example of our equipment is used year-round. Otherwise, it's used every day in the parks in, during the growing season. Replacement of bleachers. This is our third year we've been doing this, and, and our bleachers are not up to spec, so we, we're buying some this year, we'll buy, hopefully buy some more next year. Skate park completion. We're going to have a workday on that, probably this year yet, but as soon as we can, we're going to put that, all that stuff together. Continue, continue to remove street ash trees, provide replacement program and public information. I've got some information here regarding last year. Last year, we removed 85 trees. Oh, no, last year, we removed 70 trees. This year, we're removing 85 trees. And in 2014, we did, we planted 192 trees in the community according to the Trees Forever information. That's not any other outs, any other agency that is planting any trees, private owners or anything like that. So, we're trying to keep up with replacements. Skate park completion, Brookwood Park improvements, that's one of our big things we want to look at in the future. Dog park again, second walking guide, utilization of internal trail network. We had a scout do a, a walking guide with five different routes. We've got five more that we want to do with the, the trail system, so people will know a route and how long it is and, and that sort of thing. Add into the system Cedar River Parkway Trail. I think that'll be a neat opportunity too. The Civic Center, we're looking at replacing carpet in the meeting rooms and replacing the east side retaining wall we did back here this year, and it looks really good. We want to do the front of the building next year. Swimming pool, post-renovation project processes and W involvement with O&amp;M. Potentially, we're talking to them about, yes? Oh, sorry. My lovely assistants doze off. W involvement with O&amp;M, we're talking to them about some potential cooperations we can do with operation maintenance with, with their pool and our pool. Harlington Cemetery Utility Vehicle Replacement. Ash program, they've got ashes up there as well. Curb replacement program for improvement of drainage. We have some drainage issues there, so we want to, if we put a curb system in, that will help mediate that. Energy-efficient windows for the office. The office is like 300 years old. It's got old windows in it, and, and it's not 300 years old. But we want to put new windows in, so we can cut our energy bills. Golf pro shop, we are transferring reserve funds into operations to offset costs for equipment purchase. We've done this the past couple of years, and it's helped us with the, the overall cost. Utilize new chemical storage building, implement alternative course uses, foot golf, snag, which is starting new at golf. The pond project, last year, we, we bid that out. We got one. The pond project, uh, last year, we, we bid that out. We got one bidder and we thought it was too high. So we're going to do that again, and we've got some additional funding, um, that hopefully we can get the pond project done. Uh, rehab of sledding hill, um, uh, we actually got a head start on that this year because, uh, we had a excavation project and we put that excavated material on the sledding hill so it reduces the, the slope of the sledding hill, making it safer. Ash program in the golf course and club repair services is a new initiative we're doing with, um, we're going to start repairing golf clubs, and that could be a potential, uh, small revenue source. Uh, following projects proposed to be funded from capital improvement, we will talk about that tomorrow, but the golf course pond project's a hundred and twenty thousand. Last year was eighty, we bumped that up to a hundred and twenty. So those are the highlights.
Not to take any time today, but I think I've gotten a few questions on the sledding hill and is it open, usable, that type of thing. Maybe Monday night if we could get an update.
Okay. Well, maybe, Tab, do you want to just talk about the rehab of the sledding hill you mentioned and what that means?
Right. Um, we've looked at different, um, uh, information sources, and they suggest a thirty-degree slope to the sledding hill. So that's what we're, what we do with the excavation. Uh, so right now, I think we're done with that. As soon as we get snow, we can probably open it back up again.
Waiting for snow, little turn from last winter.
Remove all the weeds off that tee box so that they never will grow back there and then don't lose balls.
We're hoping that we plant that in prairie, um, so, uh,
Don't hit your ball there.
That's the goal, yeah.
Don't hit the ball there. The idea is to get it beyond the tee box.
Oh, yeah, I know.
Like Sarah said, uh, most of the things we do is regarding quality of life and, and the strategic plan that you, you have put together. In terms of the five percent, uh, request, uh, the easy way to do it is do equipment. We were looking at, if we have to do it this year, we'd look at the utility vehicle and the cemetery, uh, ten thousand for downtown trees and, and fourteen thousand for carpet here in this building. If we were to do it, uh, on a long-term, uh, there would be some reduction of services. Uh, we'd probably reduce seasonal staff, uh, potentially, uh, pool closing out or pool hours would be reduced. Uh, longer grass would be in, uh, a result. The, um, the city support for outside agencies would probably be reduced. Events like Heritage Days, uh, the Downtown Christmas, uh, those types of things because we do a lot of background work for, for agencies like that. So, uh, that might be a savings where we can concentrate on other things we need to do. Uh, let's see, depth chart.
Can you talk about the downtown trees? I know the goal is to replace all the trees in the downtown sidewalks and, and like you said, and replace them with three different styles and things, but what's the, uh, timeline on that? And I think one time you mentioned businesses would have the option if they didn't want a tree put back in a spot or something, maybe they could, if they didn't want one in front of their business or?
Yeah, right now, we're, um, right now, we're, uh, we've got costs for trees. Uh, we've been talking to Rotary Club. They're, they're looking at giving us some money to replace the trees, plus they want to help out in planting them. Now, similar to most service clubs, they're getting a little bit older, so we're gonna have to have a hole for them and have the tree right next to them. They'll drop the tree in the hole and cover it up type thing. But, but we're looking at that as a, a fall, uh, fall type of, uh, program. The, uh, the three types of trees are a podless Kentucky coffee, a honey locust tree, and a genko tree. We will be sending letters to, uh, with the help of the chamber to the all, to, all the downtown businesses telling what the plan is. We already know exactly what tree goes where, so we'll be able to identify what type of tree will go, um, in the hole. And the other thing we're going to do is we're gonna take the steel grates off and, and just put wood mulch in because, uh, they seem to be a, a tripping hazard and, and I've seen lots of communities around the state with just mulch in their, in their tree, tree holes.
I know some of the original trees, they grew a lot bigger than what was kind of expected. Are these gonna be more kind of
Right, yeah.
What we want, so you can still see the storefronts and those kind of?
And that's part, part of the reason why we picked these species is that they are either slow-growing or they are airy, so you can see through them, those types of things. Plus, they tolerate, uh, sand and salt and, and, you know, uh, that sort of thing.
Very good, thank you.
Last thing about the tree project, if you want to continue on, we're gonna put gator bags around each one. So that, what that is, is it's a, a supply of water that, that either the city or the, hopefully the store owner will fill once a week, and that slowly drips water into the, uh, tree cavity. So it, it helps with, with, um, watering the trees over, over the time.
And thank you for letting people know that Rotary is looking for younger members.
Well, thank you Rotary. Uh, they've done lots of nice things for us lately and, 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 uh, as well as the other service clubs. Okay. Yeah. Uh, we have nineteen full-time equivalents in our department, seven and a third full-time, uh, that, uh, do a lot of things. So I want to show you that. Okay. Yeah, we're good. Yep. Uh, this is the administrative department. Uh, that's me and the office manager. And objectives, look for options for fun trail improvements and expansion. Continue to use the park and open space plan, uh, best use of resources regarding succession plan. Like I said, we have some older folks that might be retiring here. Can you work with accounting department? We'd really like to get a, a credit card system to be used at the office, at the pool, and the golf course already has one, but, but I think that'd be very convenient to our customers. Establish a Friends of the Dog Park Committee. We're working on that right now, but we want to get that bunch going, uh, group going and, and have them be active in, in the, uh, the operation of the dog park. So really, the major difference is the, um, we went from half of a office manager to a full-time office manager, and that's basically the difference. Otherwise, everything's pretty much standard in the administration budget.
Can you, can you talk a little bit about that, that's, that shift to a full-time office manager?
Well, he was always full-time, but he was shared with, with economic development and, uh, building and zoning, and, uh, it was felt that they need their own full-time person, so, uh,
You had a full-time and a half-time?
Right, we had a full-time and a half-time.
And so, part of this, part of this change was when Bill came over in the last year, um, to split that. They went from having a half-time shared, had two shared half-times or half and a quarter time? I forget. Garrett and John were both in there and they were both split between both areas. And we decided it was better to just focus one on one area for full-time support and one on the other area. So I think it was, we were at like one and a quarter positions or one and, one point six, and then we just bumped it back up in last year's budget to one point, or one in each. So the offset in financials came with, um, Bill coming on board. It actually reduced the overall salary costs and economic development funding and zoning, and we'll get to that.
Parks, uh, basically, two full-time people, provide citizens waverly, high-quality, efficient, maintain, increasingly useful parks and play areas in public lands. So, this year, their objectives, maintain new skate park, dog park, and Cedar River Parkway. Those are all gonna be new things, second walk guide, uh, improvement plan for the veterans tribute. Uh, we've kind of taken over the maintenance of that in the past year. We've got some ideas, and we'll be applying for grants for, actually, we've got a grant for an irrigation system for that corner, and, and they want to plant some more trees and, and those types of things. We want to get a plan together for that. Concept plan for Brookwood Park, I think that's one of the big next things to do, uh, is, is improve that area and continue to remove s- street ash trees.
How many new acres this year came into the system?
Uh, well, the dog park is seven, uh, the, obviously, the veterans tribute. We're always expanding, it seems. The, um, line items, uh, not much difference in the past. Underneath the notes, Warburg Tennis is an annual contract. Uh, actually, they did a tennis court project last year, and, and our agreement is that we pay for half of it. We pay for, pay, pay them something every year. So we, we're do, it ended up being about fifty thousand dollar project. We had about nine thousand dollars. We already paid them. So we're paying for the rest of that, that, um, uh, improvement. And that's a, that's a real good, um, uh, situation because, uh, the public can use those courts. They have lights. The lights are ours. We maintain those. Uh, but, um, uh, it's, you know, the, the test seasons are short. They're in the, in the spring. So the public can use those courts a lot, and they're nice courts. Ash trees, uh, under contracts, bleachers and push mower under minor equipment. Uh, dog bags, uh, that's additional supplies with the dog park. And then the tractor and attachment is, is under here. Uh, again, this tractor has a snow blower, snow blower attachment that is used at the airport, uh, over the winter. Otherwise, it's on the ball diamonds every day, uh, in the summer, um, maintaining them.
How many floodlots do we still?
Fifty-five.
Fifty-five?
You can have any of them. Revenue-wise, uh, not much there. We, we probably write eight to ten grants a year for different areas. A lot of them are in the parks. Cemetery, one, um, cemetery supervisor. Continue to make road improvements, um, plan for repair and restoration of crypt interior. When we redid the crypt, uh, several years ago, we did the outside of it, but the inside of it's starting to fall in. And that's one of two crypts like that in the side of a hill in the state. So we think it's worth it to look at a way to preserve it. Um, we thought, brainstormed just on Friday that, that we're gonna investigate that may pay for that. But, uh, we think that's gonna be important for sixteen seventeen. And succession plan, uh, for retirement of staff by December. Uh, Craig Mayman is looking at retiring in, in December of two thousand, uh, fifteen. So line item wise, a little bit less on the, uh, salaries and wages because of his retirement, and we're looking at a permanent part-time to fill that position for a little while to see how, how we want to work that. Uh, the window replacements in there, ash trees, uh, replace a forty-two inch mower. That's a industrial-grade type, uh, homeowner's mower size because we can get in between the stones with that. Uh, the utility vehicle, and I want to make sure that people know that's not SUV. That's a, a utility vehicle that has like a bed on it and, and
A gator.
Yeah, a gator-type thing. And replace curb, again, that's part of the curb replacement project. Revenues, I'd be amiss if I didn't say they're dying to get in there, um,
Every time.
So we, uh, we depend on, uh, openings and closings, lot sales, and we used to get a lot more money in our perpetual care account, but Jack keeps on investing in things that have like zero percent interest.
It's the only thing out there.
Golf course, uh, two full-time, lots of specific, uh, part-time people for specific jobs. That seems to work for us. Complete the pond project and the objectives, landscape blocks for a new number-one forward tee entrance sign and area between cart paths.
Do you want to talk about where those came from?
Yeah, the, yeah, with the, uh, those, um, landscape block came from the Riverview Park, which used to be the, um, uh, the, uh, Heckroth property, um, on the corner of, of Riggs, yeah, okay.
We saved all those.
Yeah, and thank you again to the Warburg football team for helping us move all those blocks. There was a million of them. Economic can functionally improve ends of cart paths. That seems to be a constant battle. Tree planting plan, um, and they've been real good at, at, uh, replacing trees. Uh, we've got Scotch pine and ash trees on the golf course. And start to have conversations about repairing the pond on thirteen seventeen. It's got some issues, and it's more than just a maintenance-type thing. That'll be an engineer-type thing, so that'll be a, a, a project in the future. Golf course pro shop summary, the dark numbers are probably the things you want to look at. We're gonna spend about four hundred, five hundred forty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna ask for about seventy-nine thousand dollars in tax subsidy. Again, that's the transfer from general, and the forty thousand dollars below that is, is a transfer from the reserve fund. The reserve fund is fees or portions of the fees that people play, pay when they play golf, buy a season ticket or, or rent a cart. Golf course fund, really no changes in there in terms of, um, the expenses. You know, service and commodities is about exactly the same as this past year. Second page golf course fund, it's a, that's the, um, annual payment for equipment. What we do is we, um, uh, have a, uh, several pieces of equipment. We buy them over three years and kind of take us out of small loans. So we have a consistent number budget for the, the next three years. Golf reserve, I, I talked about that.
That maintains just a slight cash balance.
Right. Pro shop organizational chart, we have a contracted pro and, and seasonal pro shop attendance. Objectives, introduce snag as pool rentals. We want to have that as an option. If you rent the pool, you can also rent snag, and we have a, one of the pro shop people there to, uh, set up the nine-hole course and, and have kids play on that. I think that's gonna be a really cool thing. We can do that just to the, uh, west of the major golf course. Analyze successes or any producer of initial season of foot golf. We're still going to install that and, and see how that works. And then determine best practices for club repair services. It's a new thing we're gonna try this year. Uh, it's, there's, there seems to be a need to regrip and to fix clubs, and, and we have the capabilities of doing that. Pro shop fund.
Do you want to, do you want to talk about how these, the pro shop and the golf course work together for the overall, uh, operations of the course?
Well, Right, the, the golf course does the maintenance of the course itself. The pro shop, uh, controls play, uh, does the programs, does the tournaments, and, and they communicate all the time back and forth to each other, so they, they can do that the most efficiently. The club also is involved with it, especially if, if, um, uh, there's a, uh, eating event, and plus the club, we have a contract with them to, uh, sell alcohol on the course, and, and we get some money from that. So, um, it's a, it's a, uh, we're, the city is the golf and the pro shop part of it. The club is, is the social part of it, and, and we all work together very well.
Can we talk about, sorry, you want to talk about the contract between the two and the contract with the pro?
Correct.
Just their relationship?
Right, the contract with the pro is with us, uh, and, and then we rent the pro shop from the country club. So the, um, we pay them so much every year, uh, and, and, and that's worked out very well in the past. Uh, we actually did a, a joint, uh, golf commission, uh, staff, uh, country club board, uh, event, uh, meeting this past year where we established some, some common goals and a common mi- mission statement because the experience of golf is the most important thing, and, and we're all involved with it, so, uh, and that worked out very well.
The country club also does have their own league, leagues, and does their own tournaments and things too, so it's kind of a mix. The city puts on tournaments and, and things, but then the country club also has their own, but yet city staffs maintain the course, you know, I mean, it's so
And they have to pay for their golf, so, um, it's a healthy relationship. Season ticket holders, uh, predominantly are in the country club, and, and that's a good constant, uh, revenue source. Pro shop fund, uh, again, not much difference there regarding the bottom line. A little bit increase in the golf pro contract, that's in his contract. Any questions on that?
Mainly that budget's for merchandise and?
Uh, it, it's basically all revenue producing because they're the ones that It's, it's basically all revenue producing because they're the ones that control play and, and they're the ones that sell things and, and those types of things. So we cut that potential, we cut revenues. Aquatics, all seasonal staff there. Complete two, new pool manual after the renovation project's done. And then, and, and we're on schedule for May twenty-second completion of this year. So, so we've got to get our act together to make sure we're open, probably open on the twenty-ninth of May this year. We have to train the staff before we can let the people in. Determine best management options regarding concessions and overall operations by two thousand fifteen. Aquatics, no change in salaries and wages. The, one of the bigger things is, utilities, we're expecting to have a more efficient heating system. Minor equipment, that was for benches. And so we don't have any of that anymore because we're done with benches, with the project, with grants that we've had in the past. And we're hoping that when the project's over, we don't have as many repairs and that sort of thing. Revenues, boy, the, the golf course and the pool are all weather dependent. Last year, we had the worst year of attendance and revenues we had for a long time, but we didn't spend as much. And, and our, our state association, we've got an aquatics group and everybody's saying it's the worst or second worst in, in like the last ten years. So with a new project, there's going to be some more enthusiasm. I expect that it's going to be, probably get a, an increase at the beginning and then it kind of tapers off like every other project does.
Can we talk about the subsidy turning down?
Sure, subsidy about twenty-seven thousand, less, probably expecting about the same revenues, if not more, and, and less expenditures. Civic Center. This is one-third with the fire station and the library. And then we have a halftime custodian that's permanent part-time. Objectives, replace Civic Center meeting room carpet, phase two of the landscape wall. Plan for office renovation, leisure services zoning and economic development. And establish procedure for handwork on the outside of the building by other division staff or contract. We're still having the full-time costly person mow like these little areas around here and, and do some of the work around the building. We're thinking that we can do a lot better job and that he can be freed up for other things if we have a seasonal person do it. Civic Center, again, not much difference in the bottom line. Carpet and, and retaining wall is the big thing. We need a new TV and DVR and so we're getting one of those. Revenue, we have some revenue from meeting room rental, but a lot of our meetings are free or, or is city generated. Like we aren't charging you guys anything for this meeting.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
And do you want to talk a little bit about room rental? We've talked about adjusting the rates a little bit and where we are and where we might be able to?
We, we have a four-tier system, either, either a governmental, nonprofit or governmental or affiliate, which we don't charge anything for. That'd be like for the city, for the county, for the hospital, for light and power if they want to come in. We have a nonprofit group, which is about twenty bucks an hour to rent it. We have a, and we have a private that is about a hundred and twenty-five dollars for a four-hour period. Two fifty for all day. Those are things we can maybe look at, but again, it's not going to be humongous revenue generators. Again, lots of free events here. We don't charge anything to the farmer's market. We don't charge anything to like the best damn run, those types of things because we're involved with those types of activities.
Like a sponsorship.
Kind of a co-sponsorship or an affiliate group. And that's all for me.
Questions, discussion, ideas?
It'd be nice to find a way to reduce some of those lots that we maintain. I know, I know that people can lease them, right? I mean, does, does everybody know that?
I think in general, we've had pretty good success with neighbors, with some neighbors.
Right. Think there's twenty-five or twenty-seven that are leased right now.
Like behind me, there's, the whole city block is empty. So I mean, I may rent one, but I don't want to rent a whole city block. But I think the dry run might help that too because, you know, the whole block behind me is now going to, the dry run's going to be moved over and take up that spot. And that would be a lot less mowing than the city has to do on those four, five lots there, so.
And, and that's a good point because with all of that space, it's going to be looking at what vegetation do we put back? That's, looks good, but is not like a finished lawn. Where you have to mow it twice a week or, or every week, so.
And there's still a push like Cedar Rapids or they're trying to get FEMA to allow them to redo some of those lots.
That, that's right.
Is that still progressing or?
So we, it's kind of broken down into a two-track system. The one track is those that were used kind of state CDPG money. And those, we have fewer of those, but those are the ones they can basically say, yep, go ahead. And I think that's seven, okay, two or three, a handful. It's budget, we're, this isn't accounting, it's budgeting, it's a handful. But then all the FEMA buyouts, those are the ones where we really think it'll be most successful to kind of have Cedar Rapids and Dubuque lead the charge because each one of them has their own kind of congressional delegation. And we jump on as a friend on the back and kind of push. Because that's where the real numbers are for us is getting those FEMA dollars for those. So I know that they keep talking about it. I wouldn't be surprised if there's some push this year from even the Cedar Rapids Iowa City state delegation to push at the federal level. So not done yet with that discussion.
If in the process, we in fact do transition to lots that don't have as much upkeep, I think it will be important to do some communication and education about that because we already have parts of town now where that was the intention apparently. But people want it mowed down to the ground and look like a lawn. I mean, the people who live near those places, so.
Yeah, I, I know that's a big discussion and that's going on in many communities right now as they look to do restorative native prairie plantings and woodlot management. It's almost a cultural and generational change as to what people expect that to look like. So we have some drainage ways that were seeded up just to be wetland so that when it floods, the grass lays down and when it's back, it's up. Well, neighbors don't want to look at it when it's up, so they want it to be lawn-like. And so I know that's important. And we've actually talked about this spring, working with Pheasants Forever and Trees Forever and Iowa Natural Heritage Foundation to come up with management plans because that's a service that they'll provide to communities for minimal or no dollars. And part of that will be public outreach. Other thoughts or questions on the whole kind of leisure services item, items?
Hoping for a good summer.
Hoping for a good summer.
Eighty-two degrees, twenty percent humidity and sunshine.
Can't budget that unfortunately.
That sounds like golf course, pool would like to be about ninety.
It's funny like a
Cool in the morning, hot in the afternoon.
Yeah, there you go.
We just shade the golf course.
Someone on NASA just released a heat map of the world from last year. And it was all, you know, basically the same as was the year before, except we looked right in the Midwest and it was blue. It was colder than everywhere else was, was normal. You know, we got nailed there, so.
Where I worked before, no joke, we used the old farmer's almanac to look at the upcoming forecast. And we were about with them, you know, about eighty percent of the time, it was pretty darn close. So maybe we'll start looking at that. I'll, I'll buy you a copy next year. Okay, we're at twelve oh five. We can go through the rest of these fairly briefly, legislative, legal, admin, community development and zoning. It's up to you guys or we can just tack them on the very beginning next
Just get them done.
Okay.
Like I said, recommend we, we're an hour over.
It was
My preferences are due next week.
It was nine to noon.
Oh, I thought it was nine to eleven.
Oh, sorry. Apologies.
Is the next session going to take the whole time or?
I, I don't believe, because we're kind of breaking it out and we're doing capital planning discussion Monday night. Next week, really what we have left is road use tax, water, sewer, solid waste and general capital fund. That fund three-twenty capital projects. So I doubt that that would take three hours.
I'm just thinking we're coming back already.
Just tack it on next week.
Make this a longer day and average it out.
When you say you can go through these quickly, what does that mean?
Well, it depends on bill.
I mean, I guess I
I guess I don't want to, I don't want to rush this stuff. I mean, the, the people that are at the end tend to get rushed, so I don't want to
What we can do if we start off next week, because we do need a little bit of time in, in bills. Not that there's a, a lot of projects and items, but just kind of explain how things have changed in the dollars because we've gone from basically an economic development director and a part-time attorney to a full-time, all of it. So we can, we can discuss that next time.
If we were going to take extra time today, I guess I'd like to spend just a couple of minutes getting general reaction from what we've seen today so we don't lose track.
Well, I, yeah, I would like, before we dismiss, I would like some, be able to take some notes and just get input, feedback, questions for next week that we can research and put together.
Good consensus, want to push the, the remaining ones to next week?
Sure.
Follow-up or conclusion, thoughts, procedures? We'll start with Dan.
Again, just general thank you to everybody for putting this together. It's very obvious that folks have taken the responsibility to be good stewards and it shows in what they put together. I guess the, the whole reserve fund, I think is a good idea. Again, it's how do you build that? What's the appropriate level? I think that may be a topic that the group wants to spend some time on. I think it, long range, it certainly has some possibilities, but short range, maybe jumping to the level you've suggested might. I guess I look back on, on my tenure here, we keep promising the citizens that through growth, through cost reductions, we'll keep your property taxes as reasonable as we can. And by going to the full two sixty, I think is what you were, two hundred and sixty thousand. If we go less than that, we may actually be able to show them a little bit of savings and reward them for supporting us, believing in the fact that we are trying to be responsible with their tax dollar and.
Dave?
I think just my only, I appreciate everyone's work and putting together the budgets and so forth. And I know we're just at the beginning of, of this. One of the challenges I would make is when, some time ago, before we started, I guess I was looking for a, we talked about a, how we would get to a ten percent reduction in the budget. I, I know that's kind of been reduced to five and it looks like it's just been talked about service and commodities. What I, I guess what I was looking for is just overall budget, you know, if that was something that we, for whatever reason we had to do. I think it's just for us to be judicial and so forth. I think there's a lot of concern in the community about budgets and so forth. And, and I want to take a proactive approach in reversing that trend. So I guess I would, I would further challenge just some hard documented looks on budget by budget on how we would do that.
In addition to the discussions we've had today or what, what areas, I guess for sure?
It looked like we just kind of was in, kind of in general terms and maybe not so documented and so forth. And it was just on the services and commodity section of the budget, which is just a small part of it. That'd be my only feedback is.
We can provide a list of what we've talked about today and the personnel reductions, project reductions.
Yeah, and I think I, you know, I said at the beginning, not just say, okay, well, we're going to have to just personnel reductions. That's not what I'm looking for. I mean, I don't want to do that either, so.
Okay, well, it's, it's hard to get to five or ten percent in the service industry without that. But we'll, we'll list it out so we have a table.
Chris?
I'm just kind of agree with what Dan said about the fund. Maybe that's the right level or, or not. Otherwise, yeah, everything, you know, everyone's done a good job. Finally starting to understand this after four years, so. All the magic funds, fun accounting, awesome.
Edie?
I want to thank everyone too, all the directors that, you know, we had the opportunity to listen to today. You know, budget building is a, is a tough process these days and so I appreciate the work that's gone into it. I also look forward to the discussion of the reserve fund and would echo what, what Dan has said. And I guess just in quick reaction to Dave, I, maybe we're just hearing, you know, different things. But I'd like to hear more about the public's concern, I guess, about budget. I've not heard anything about that. Of course, everyone expects us to be responsible with the budget. But I'd like to know more about what that concern is when we get into it.
Wes?
I would just echo a lot of what everyone said. I mean, I agree with what everyone said about the reserve fund. I mean, I think it's a good idea, but maybe by lowering it to two hundred or a hundred and eighty, that would be a way to throw some money back in and lower, lower taxes a little bit or lower the impact. It's a good thing to start, but we can also use that as, as a cushion. You know, I do kind of agree with Dave on some of the stuff he said. You know, I hear a lot about our budget and our spending and this and that too. So I appreciate what each department did and kind of laying out what they said. But I think there's other options you can always look at too. I mean, I've worked in four or five different corporations and a lot of them free salaries or they, you know, had no principle five, six years ago, just cut everyone's salary by ten percent instead of laying people off. I mean, there's lots of things you can do without cutting an entire position or not mowing lawns or doing those kind of things. So a lot of corporations do a lot of things like that to cut budgets and spending without really getting rid of people. So there's just different ways to look at it, but overall, good job. And I think the biggest talk, I, you know, I would agree with everyone is the, the new reserve fund, which I do think is a good idea. But maybe if we lower it, it could help lower taxes a little bit, so.
I guess I will have, take the last bit on it and then we'll concur on, on the reserve fund. It's, I like the idea of having something there beyond just our, our little bit of operating expenses. But having something in case there is a major event or even, you know, something that we have that we can tap into in, in the event of, of a need. But the, the amount and how much we build that up, how quickly, I mean, the potential we can build that up to that level over several years as opposed to all in one, one year when we've got it. I like the fact that we're not having to, to backfill, use all the entire backfill to keep our city going. That's, that's reflective of how well we're, we are budgeting and managing as far as that. And, you know, the one thing I kind of know from or learned over the years is, is the taxes are going to go up or, and we don't, unfortunately, we don't have the control over what the county is going to do or what the school board is going to do. Though we hear about it as though we do. That's one part of just kind of our, our role is in educating. On the same side, you know, taxable valuations go up, that's always a good thing. It's a lot better than the opposite with the home values going down. We hear a lot more, I think, screaming if they were going down. So it's, it's that kind of, kind of balancing and trying to, trying to, trying to, trying to operate within that evaluation going up. And so by lowering, being able to maybe lower our, our asking rate, we can offset that a little bit for, for people. And then again, thank you to the, the directors and everyone, but also I want to throw out thank you to Carla and Valerie because they get to put together these nice wonderful big binders and organizing them and labeling them for us, so.
And delivering them to my front door.
And handle, and getting them out there so that they, they do a lot of extra work too that's within that. So with that, I think we have.
I just have one, can I just say one more?
Yeah, sure.
I guess on the cost reduction thing, and I know it's harder for the city because we have, I would, what, eighty percent of our employees are union employees or something, so. But just on the, you know, larger companies that I've worked for like Keene Mutual, CBE Group, John Deere, those kind of places. Every position has a salary range with a cap. And so it doesn't seem like the city waverly has. doesn't seem like the city waverly has that, and I, you know, I know union contracts and things go into that, but, you know, if, if you work at a, at a company and you're a programmer one, you make between this and this, and when you hit your cap, you don't go over that cap, unless you get promoted to a new position.
They still make cost of living adjustments, I mean, that's still pretty standard, I mean, there's, well, where I work it is, so.
It, it depends where you work, but most places have a cap, and then like you said, yeah, they may get cost of living, but it's not always three percent or whatever it is, or they may cap it totally. So, it's just different things to look at, and I know some of that isn't possible with, you know, the way our city is structured, but.
Yeah, we, we do try to, we do have a five-step range for everybody, and then after that, it is just your cost of, annual cost of living adjustment, so, but we'll take a look at that, see maybe what other cities do and options out there.
It's just be, you know, some, if someone starts when they're twenty at a certain position and never gets promoted, they, they could be making sixty, seventy thousand dollars by the time they retire and not really get, well, that wouldn't happen in a corporation or, you know, I guess I would say, but just throwing things out there.
I think that's pretty much for the day.
Move adjourn? Back in. Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.